Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our city council meeting. We're going to start off if Pastor Scott is here from Grace Baptist to do the invocation. I don't see him. No, I don't see him. All right, we're going to move on to the pledge. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You can be seated. Okay, at this time, I would like to call the meeting to order. Ms. Edwards, can you read the special instructions, please?
Individuals wishing to address the city council are requested to complete a speaker card and deliver it to city clerk staff prior to the item being heard by the city council. Please observe a three-minute limit for communications, and once called upon to speak, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Mayor, there were revisions to the agenda. For Agenda Item 7.11, the exhibit was revised. Previously, Item 7.12 was moved to administrative reports, and it is now Item 10.4. The recommended action was also updated. And for Agenda Item 11.1, the title was revised. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Edwards. Well, we have a few proclamations and recognitions tonight. The first one, we would like to invite Rashad Al-Dabag, Executive Director of Arab American Civic Council, to the podium to receive the proclamation. Rashad, are you here? Okay, that was a quick one. He may show up. If he does, we'll get back to him if he gets here in time. All right, next one, we would like to invite Fire Captain, Corona Fire Captain, Shawn Harmon, and Rocky, our new Fire Department Peer Support K-9, up to the podium. Hey, Rocky. Hi. Boy, you're a good-looking pooch. Hi, how are you? Congratulations, Captain Harmon. I'm going to go ahead and let you say a few words about Rocky in the program. There you go.
I'm just going to let him run free with you guys right here. Yeah, it's fine. Good evening, everybody. First off, thank you for having me. My name's Shawn Harmon. I'm a fire captain. I've been with the city of Corona for 22 years now and in the fire service since '93. So I have training in critical incident stress management, critical incident stress debriefing, advanced peer support with suicide awareness. And I've been a member of our peer support program since 2014. And so on to the star of the show, this guy here is Rocky. He's an English Labrador, and he's a year and a half old. And for the past year, he's been in training for advanced obedience training, and he has an emphasis on emotional support scenarios. So what he is, is he's our Corona Fire Department Support K-9, and he follows in the footsteps of Corona PD's Raider. And so he's the first Corona Fire Department Peer Support Dog. And what he does is he's for the Fire Department employees, the city employees, and the citizens of Corona. So he comes to work with me every day, 24/7, and we are here for critical incidents. So we attend diffusing, debriefs, funerals, and we are also part of a Critical Incident Support K-9 team who is deployable through Master Mutual Aid in the statewide system for large incidents such as the LA fires that we had earlier this year. So this guy's something special. He's been with me 70 days today, and he's navigated the fire service in 70 days, which took me 30 years. So he's something. I've had a lot of dogs. He's the smartest one I've ever had. So with that being said, it's a commitment. It's a commitment from the city, commitment from the Fire Department, commitment from my crew, so thank you for that, commitment from my family at home to keep consistency. And my job as the handler is to make sure that we take care of him, we don't overwork him, burn him out, so that at the end of the day, he's still a dog. And so Rocky takes care of us, and I take care of him, and thank you all for having us tonight.
And a big shout out to you, Captain Harmon. Being a handler is a lot of work, and it takes a lot of commitment. So thank you. You finally got your dream, brother.
Thank you.
All right. Do you want to, Caleb, you want to get a picture or anything? Or yeah? Oh, all right, there we go. Thanks again. Let's hear it for the new buddy, Rocky. All right, next, we will be presenting awards of excellence, and I would like to invite, from the California Parks and Recreation Society, I'd like to invite past President Kyla Brown on up here, and our Parks and Recreation Commissioner, Tomas Munoz, and Madeline Black, our Community Services Program Coordinator. Come on up to the podium. Now, I have recognitions for each of you, but I think this is going to be a lot better if Kyla explains what's going on here. Here you go, Kyla.
Thank you so much. As you mentioned, I am the past president for the California Park and Recreation Society, and I'm also in my day job, the Parks Director for Riverside County Regional Park and Open Space District. So it's nice to be here in my neighborhood, recognizing excellence. The CPRS Annual Awards Program celebrates outstanding examples of quality facility and park design, programming accomplishments, effective communication, community leadership, and professional successes that take place daily. Through our five award categories, we highlight the people, places, spaces, programs, and stories that make communities like Corona special. This year, 135 applications were received, and only 40 awards were given out. Two of those awards are here in the city of Corona. I am going to start with the champion of the community, Commissioner Tom Munoz. Tom is one of only seven recipients of this prestigious award throughout the state, and he is a cherished member of the Corona community, who has given back considerably through decades of volunteer work with the Parks and Recreation Commission, Parks Foundation, Boy Scouts of America, and the Corona Norco Unified School District. Tom is a landscape architect by trade and played a key role in the development and adoption of several important master plans that will help shape the future of Parks and Recreation Services in the city of Corona for years to come. He has been a champion of the community programs and services through his volunteer work to help plant 15,000 trees in the city over a five-year period, raise funds for community projects and services, and educate local youth about parks and landscape design. Tom's dedicated service will have a lasting impact on Parks and Recreation in the city of Corona for many years to come. Just a little note about these awards that they're receiving. These are handcrafted, unique awards, and they are formerly unhoused individuals that learn a new trade and skill and get to create these as their job. And so we're giving back to the community as well as giving you a unique piece of art. All right, the next award is a Creating Community Award of Excellence. Corona is one of nine awardees in this category. The city of Corona's volunteer program provides a central process to access volunteer opportunities throughout the city and its various departments. This flexible program allows for traditional, ongoing, site-based volunteerism, single-day drop-in events, and even self-guided opportunities. Popular offerings like the monthly Corona Beautiful Community Cleanup have reactivated and empowered neighbors to connect and give back in meaningful ways. New policies and technology have also allowed city staff to maximize efficiencies while maintaining a sense of personal touch and connection with its residents. Implemented in 2021, the program now boasts over 1,400 active volunteers who have contributed more than 21,000 hours of service each year. This is valued at over $725,000. Through this investment and innovation, the city now has means to actively engage its residents and help foster a culture that makes the city truly feel like home. And this award is being presented to Madeline Black, the Community Services Program Coordinator.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Great job, guys. Thanks, Kyla. Thank you for being here. Okay, wrestlers, you're going to have to wait just one more minute. I think Rashad showed up, right? There he is. Okay, we would like to invite Rashad Al-Dabag, Executive Director of Arab American Civic Council, to the podium to receive the proclamation. Welcome.
Thank you.
Hi, welcome. How are you, sir? All right, we're here to acknowledge, as National Arab American Heritage Month, April 2025. Whereas for over a century, Arab Americans have been making valuable contributions to every aspect of American society in medicine, law, business, education, technology, government, military service culture, and whereas since migrating to America, people of Arab descent have shared their rich cultures and traditions with all of their communities while demonstrating their commitments to citizenship and public service, and whereas they brought with them to America a shared tradition of strong family values, academic achievement, and work ethic, along with a diversity in faith and creed that have enriched our great democracy, and whereas Arab Americans have also enriched our society by sharing in the entrepreneurial American spirit that makes our nation free and prosperous. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Jim Steiner, on behalf of the Corona City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of April 25, 2025, as National Arab American Heritage Month. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a couple words?
First, I want to thank our mayor and our council members for this recognition, Arab American Heritage Month. My name's Rashad. I'm the Executive Director of the Arab American Civic Council and a proud resident of Corona, and we have...
Mayor Koss.
Naveen.
All right. This recognition is a powerful acknowledgement of our presence, our contributions, and our shared future in the city. Arab Americans in Corona is a growing and steadily growing community, and you can see it all around us. There are small businesses, the restaurants, the faith-based institutions that are bringing people together across cultures and generations. Our traditions are becoming a part of this fabric of the city, and this proclamation reflects that. But we also know that Arab Americans have too often been marginalized and at times vilified. So moments like these help us reverse that narrative. They affirm that we belong, that we are seen, that we are valued. In a time where many communities are under threat, this proclamation is a reminder that it reminds us of the responsibility we have, and we all share to protect one another, protect our nation, protect our city, and to ensure that every resident in Corona feels safe, supported, and celebrated. Thank you again for this recognition.
All right, thank you. That's for you. And we got a picture real quick, you guys? All right, we would like to invite Coach Jimmy Bowers, Assistant Coaches, and the Corona High School Girls Wrestling Team to the podium to receive this recognition. You should be doing really good, huh? All right, as you can see, there's a lot of folks up here. I'm just going to read one of the recognitions, and this one is Madison Skaggs. Which one's Madison?
She's down here.
All right, then that's perfect. That's perfect. All right, you guys. So the city council, the city of Corona, California, is proud to recognize and commend Madison Skaggs, even though you're not here, Corona High School Girls Wrestling Team, 2025 CIF Southern Division Champions. Whereas the Corona High Lady Panthers are 11-time Big Eight League Champions and five-time CIF Southern Section Champions, completing their championship with a 16-0 record. Nicely done. And whereas the Corona City Council wishes to recognize, in this case Madison, but you each got your own personal one, for her determination and commitment to her team, earning them the title of 2025 CIF Southern Division Champions and the 2025 CIS SS Eastern Division Individual Team Champions Award, which deserves special recognition. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Jim Steiner, on behalf of the Corona City Council, do hereby congratulate Madison and all these wonderful wrestlers for representing your hometown of Corona with true spirit of teamwork, sportsmanship, and fair play. Congratulations to all of you. Coach, would you like to say a couple words?
I just wanted to thank you guys for having us once again here. I think we're becoming part of the furniture here, so we appreciate it. But I just wanted to just mention some staggering statistics that we had this year. We made some history with us. Even though we were 16-0 this year, the max points that you can get in a match is 84 points, and we averaged 72 points a match to nine. So we kind of dominated all our points. And I know we said we're 11-time Big Eight League champs, which means we've won 55 matches in a row in our league and have not lost, you know, not one match. So I'm super proud of these girls. You know, it's tough just winning one CIF championship, but we won three this year. So it's a testament to them, and of course, my coaches, Coach Chris Johnson, Coach Mia Dow, a couple other coaches that aren't here. So with that, we appreciate, you know, us getting recognized here by the city because we're happy to represent, especially when the biggest championship we won this year was the Masters Championship, and that's over 300 schools in Southern California to be number one. Thank you.
Well, congratulations. We're really proud of each of you. Keep up the good work, okay? Let's get in front of the podium. We'll take a picture of all of us, okay?
Huh? Almost over. Oh. I got four of them. Should we shift? We should shift towards the middle. Here, let me move this. Those guys over there, they fight, but only on Wednesdays. I'll wait. Shoot Thursday.
Congratulations, Coach of the Year. All right, so, yeah, we can go back up top. This would be a good time to sneak out unless you want to stay for our council meeting, which you're more than welcome to. Bye. All right. As we're making our way back up to the dais, I'd like to invite Josh Cosper, Consultant Program Manager, and Alan Zhang, Senior Engineer, to provide the next presentation.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. We have a brief presentation tonight to provide an update on the McKinley Street Gray Separation Project. My name is Alan Zhang. Joining me is Josh Cosper from Mark Thomas. So here is the overview of tonight's presentation. We will begin with a summary of recent construction activities, including roadway, underground utilities, retaining walls, structures. Next, we'll get a look ahead of the remaining construction activities with a reminder of the current detours that are in place. We will also review the most current right-of-way status, and finally, we will review our business support and public outreach efforts thus far. So you may be wondering, what are the major improvements that have been constructed since our last update meeting? Well, we finished the Estelle Road intersection improvements in early December. Here are some pictures looking over the Popeyes Parking Lot in the upper right, and from the Ewing Parking Area in the lower left, showing the road and wall improvements. Loop Road, or as it will officially be named, Paseo Los Arcos, was also completed, just short of the McKinley Street intersection in December. Here are some pictures from mid-March of the Paseo Los Arcos improvements. We have started removing the dirt to get ready for the water quality basin improvements. We are nearly finished with the 91 on- and off-ramp improvements as of December as well. All of the major closures are completed, and we are now down to only minor closures to finish the ramp improvements over the next few months. The Sampson Slip Ramp connecting southbound McKinley traffic was also completed and operational. All of these improvements were critical to getting traffic onto the bridge, which most of you may have driven on by now. This milestone required a significant push by the project team in the fourth quarter last year to avoid the wind and rain events that occurred in early January. Here are some of the improvements that took a lot of effort to but are often unnoticed. If you recall from the last presentation, we had talked about the 12-inch WMWD brand line relocation and showed this picture of the siphon structure being built. And as you can see, this next picture here, we have all of the lightweight cellular concrete fill around it, and that work has now nearly completed. Underneath the walls in the upper right is a network of storm drain pipes that are now buried and operational. We are nearly at a point where all of the project drainage improvements have been installed. This is the last critical area in the lower left as we work to complete the tie-in of the city's water line in the coming weeks.
Hello?
Oh, perfect. Green light's on.
All right. Sorry about that. So as I was mentioning, in the lower left, this is one of the last critical path items that are currently in progress. This is the 30-inch transmission line that feeds the city's zone two with potable water. This work will require a surgical approach with a lot of planning, as we needed to minimize the downtime to the surrounding water users, and also making the connection when the overall anticipated water usage by the community is low. And we are progressing very well with the construction of the retaining walls along the east side of McKinley. We finished the retaining walls south of Sampson, and that area is now just awaiting for final asphalt paving. And as you can see, we finished a lot more retaining walls on the west side of McKinley around the Estelle intersection late last year. We had our last lightweight cellular concrete pour for the retaining walls along the east side of McKinley late March and are nearly finished with these improvements as well. It is down to final paving, wall coping improvements, and cleanup. So I'll now turn it over to Josh to discuss the upcoming construction activities and the update on the most current right-of-way status.
Perfect. Thanks, Alan. Now, let's see if I can operate the mic and the clicker at the same time. So what's left, hopefully not a lot, but the key item that we're really trying to get through right now, as Alan just talked about, is this water line transmission. We are so close. We're just trying to get through the flushing and the chlorination part of this before we can make the official connection. the chlorination part of this before we can make the official connection. So it's, it's in the next week or two that we're really trying to push to make this happen. After that, we're really out of the ground at that point in time, and, and the risk is significantly out of there. And it's just, it's like water line features at the surface for any kind of underground at this point in time. So it's backfill operations. And then it's, it's really going to be after that, a sprint to the finish line. Later this year, getting the rest of the roadway and retaining wall improvements to open up the Loop Road or the Paseo Los Arcos Road intersection in the next couple of months. So for the remaining east half of the roadway improvements, we're nearly finished with the retaining walls. Well, we are finished actually with the south Sampson. It's really that surface features that Alan just talked about. But, you know, we're through the hardest parts of the 91 off-ramp, on-ramp areas as well. It's just going to leave, there's no more big closures. It's now just a handful of small nighttime closures to finish up the remaining work. And then finishing the retaining walls and roadway improvements between Sampson and Paseo Los Arcos, as Alan was just talking about. So with that said, we do feel real confident now that we're going to be out of the ground here relatively quickly. Construction's going to be complete by mid to late summer. And then it's a matter of working on the ribbon cutting, ribbon cutting ceremony to actually celebrate shortly thereafter. So we've had a lot of questions here recently about how to walk or bike along McKinley between Magnolia to Sampson. Right now, until the project's construction is complete, the sidewalk and casual bicycle access, we're advising everybody to use the Corona Cruiser. We just don't have the room out there to make it safe, unfortunately. But that stop that's at Magnolia and McKinley, it's been active since the beginning of the project. It's got hourly stops from 6:53 a.m. to 6:17 p.m. that's going to connect to the stops at the Walmart Shopping Center in Griffin Way north of the 91. It's temporary until the east half of the roadway improvements are open. But with, as I said, with the limited room, it's creating a safety issue of trying to put that in with the heavy-duty equipment that's out there as well. And so the route map that you see out there, that's on the actual city's Corona Cruiser website and has been for the last couple of years. Once fully constructed, though, there are what we call Class II lanes, which are the striped lanes along the outside through to the 91 freeway from Magnolia. Additionally, we'll have sidewalks along the east side all the way through the project that'll provide that connectivity. And then also you'll have the ability to connect back to Sampson Avenue through Paseo Los Arcos. So walking, pedestrian will be there in the permanent conditions. So there have been some challenges with people in traffic not quite using the detours and creating some safety issues. Most recently, about a week and a half ago, a private semi-truck and trailer clipped a fire hydrant that almost jeopardized some of this water line connection that we talked about, making a turn they shouldn't have made. So we thought it'd be a good idea to go over the detour roads and the routes again. Just, just, we're trying, it's, you know, basically, we have this everywhere on all our notices, on our website, all our social blast text program. It goes out quite frequently, live interactive maps. But we just, we want to use it just to remind everybody for the next few months, let's, let's just use this as best as we can so we can finish the project. The end is near. So with that said, apologize that I have to go through this, but I'll try to make it quick. So it'll be like a choose-your-own-destiny map here. So if you're to or from, going to or from west of McKinley Street, and you're south of the railroad tracks, you can, you can see kind of the blue dash line that we're going to talk about. The best route to use is Magnolia Avenue to connect to either Sixth Street or the I-15. And if you're north of the railroad tracks, use Radio Road from Sixth Street to connect to Sampson Avenue. And again, you can see the blue dashed roads out there that I'm talking through as I run through these slides. Similarly, if you're going to or from east of McKinley, if you're south of the railroad tracks, the best route is going to be using Magnolia Avenue to connect either State Route 91, Pierce, or Buchanan. If you're north of the railroad tracks, connect to Sampson Avenue from Buchanan. And then lastly, if you're traveling to or from north or south of McKinley Street, we got a whole bunch of ways to go. I-15 can connect you to either Hidden Valley Parkway to McKinley Street, the promenade to Magnolia Avenue. Coming, you know, from the north of the project, I-15 can also connect you to Magnolia Avenue from the south. And then if you're north of the railroad tracks, connect to Sampson through El Camino and Radio and Magnolia Avenue. There, there's lots of signage out there. We maintain it frequently. Additionally, as I said, we have project updates through the social media, text programs, emails sent out to everybody that's subscribers to it. We've got the live interactive maps on the project website, you know, and so we're just trying to broadcast this. Again, we just, we're asking everybody, just a couple more months, few more months here, and we're nearly there. So with that said, let's talk a little bit about the right-of-way progress. You can see the snippet of the report we post on the city's website, and then the link below is the status report that's updated after every closed session. Luckily, we haven't had a lot of changes here. We're still trying to work through the last remaining two properties and business owner on it. But there's access on the city's website for this, and so we're, we're still trying to make kind of the final last little bit on this to close this out. In terms of the economic development outreach, the city staff is connected with 88 businesses via phone calls, emails, and in-person visits. Ten of those were in the city's monthly newsletter that goes out to more than 13,000 subscribers. They also continue to offer several free business promotion opportunities, which include the monthly newsletter as well as the promotion on social media. And they're also offering workforce support through subsidized training opportunities and the, with the county, as well as on the dedicated Live Work Corona website that seeks to connect Corona employers with the local workforce. And with that said, let me turn it over to Alan to finish the presentation.
All right. Thanks, Josh. So as shown on this slide, we have conducted numerous, both in-person and virtual public outreach meetings. The most recent one was held last Thursday, virtually via Zoom. And as Josh mentioned earlier, as we project the next public presentation, it'll be the ribbon cutting ceremony. And in the meantime, we will continue to implement our text program with now over 500 subscribers. If you aren't already part of our text program, please just text McKinley to 844-518-1409. And we will continue to send out public broadcasts and outreach notices through the city's social media on a bi-monthly basis, updating on construction look-aheads and project achievements. We will continue to actively monitor the project hotline and project email, and we will continue with updates to the interactive web-based map showing the anticipated traffic detours and any upcoming lane closures, which is also posted on the city's website. You can also find us at McKinleyUpdates.com. And lastly, we will continue with routine aerial drone footage, time lapses, and other photography throughout the construction of the project to share with the public. That does conclude our presentation. Thank you for your time. Josh and I are available for any questions.
All right. Thank you for providing that update. My colleagues have any questions? Okay. Thanks, guys. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards in public for the proclamation, recognition, or the presentation?
Mayor, yes. I have one speaker card for Agenda Item 5.2 and one speaker card for Agenda Item 5.5.
Okay. Maddie, I'm guessing you're 5.2 for Rocky, huh?
Can you hear me? Okay. So, good evening, Mayor Steiner, council members. I want to give special thank yous to Mayor Steiner, Chief Young, and Captain Harmon for introducing Captain Harmon and Rocky to the city. As, this is my addition of, my next addition of "Let's Get to Know More About Corona." As you can remember, I was lucky enough to be able to discuss a little bit about the police, our K-9 officers earlier last year. So I found out in the, earlier in the summertime that the fire department was going to be getting a peer support dog as well. And I have been bugging Captain Young for months to do this. So I, again, I coordinated with Mayor Steiner, Captain Young, I mean, Chief Young. Thank you so much for letting me do this. When I originally, I get to skip half of this because we, Captain Harmon already gave that information. So moving on, when I asked Chief Young to please provide me some information, I had written out some questions. I got this lovely document that the city, that the fire department puts out. If you'll show that. It's the Corona Fire Department 2024 Annual Report. And there's so much information in it, I can't possibly read all of it. But I'll just give you some highlights. The first thing is, I don't know if everybody, I know you all are aware of the fact that there are seven police stations, fire stations in the city. Did I say seven? The location for the seven of them are, the first station, number one, is on Magnolia. Station number two is on Harrison. Station number three is on South Smith, near Corona High School. Station number four is on McKinley. Number five is on Canyon Crest off of Green River. Number six is off of Upper, near Main Street, and number seven is off of Bedford Canyon Road. If you can see, oh, it's too small. I didn't realize it would show. But the chief has it listed by individual stations, the number of unit responses and the total of responses. And the total unit responses was 23,661, which I thought was a pretty good number. The next, next information I want to talk about is the actual makeup of the fire department. By the numbers, there's 112 firefighters, 11 fire prevention staff to emergency, six professional staff, 15 fire cadets, volunteers, and interns. Now again, this is a little different situation than any other department in the city because they work 24/7. So the way I got to understand this is they work three shifts that rotate through a 48/96 schedule, meaning they work 48 hours straight, then 96 hours off, for a total of about, of an average of 56-hour work week. And daily, there's 35 on-staff in the fire department. For the training, there's a total of 25,625 total training hours. 16 members of the fire department was promoted this year. Three members completed probation. And I find this interesting. All firefighters are trained at a minimum of EMTs requiring 170 hours of initial training and 24 hours of continuing education every two years. 61 of the 112 firefighters are trained as paramedics, which required 1,090 hours of initial training and 48 hours of continuing education every two years. Okay, next. I, um, I lost my, lost my place here. Uh-oh. Oh, here we go. For, for the fire and emergency medical response times, 90% of the response times are 7 minutes, 27 seconds or less, and 72.46% of the response time hit the department target of 6 minutes or less. And again, I'd like to note that, living off of Magnolia, I'm sure that a lot of the fire department is slowed down a lot by some of the traffic, and people forget how to respond to emergencies. I've seen it happen where they won't move over. So nothing against them. Then I made, I had to ask the question of Chief if they participated in any of the LA fires. As you can recall, a couple of years ago, I was out in Redlands, and lo and behold, parking next to me was the fire, fire department chief battalion, excuse me, battalion chief truck, and I got to meet them all the way out there in 2021. And I was asking them why, and they said, because they were helping our neighbors. If you remember, that was the year San Bernardino had a lot of snow. So of course, I have to ask the question again, do any of the fire, did our firefighters participate in any of the LA fires? As you can see, there's a number. There's a long list, and if I counted correctly, I believe there's a total of 34 of them, that they participated in fires outside of the Corona area, which I think is outstanding. Now, here's the part that actually made me cry. I'm truly involved with trying to be innovative and be ahead of the game in many areas. And this is a direct quote from that, excuse me, from, from the report, and it says, "In 2024, we continue to evolve our operations, integrating cutting-edge advancements to enhance emergency response. Among our most groundbreaking initiatives, Corona Fire became the first fire department in California to deliver blood products in the field, providing critically injured patients with life-saving transfusions before they reach the hospital. This innovation underscores our commitment to pushing the boundaries of pre-hospital care and ensuring the best possible outcome for our community." And having been involved in a situation where a loved one was bleeding out in front of me, let me tell you, every second counts. And I think that's pretty wonderful. So I want to give a very special thank you to Chief Young, Captain Harmon, Mayor Steiner, and Ms. Sylvia Edwards. Basically, I'm really impressed with the city that taking pride for the city of Corona that we live in. Thank you.
Thank you, Maddie. Nice job. Okay, and we have a speaker for Item 5.5. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. I think I could summarize the detour situation as just stay the hell away from McKinley for the next six to eight months. It's the same people running it that ran the 91 project, so I wouldn't expect anything less confusing than that. I also wanted to clarify that when, when it's like, well, hey, we've only got two properties left to settle, it's really only the two significant takes of the whole project. The rest of it is just temporary stuff, a little bit of a curb here, a little, you know, some loss of consideration, you know, which, you know, I think has been pretty clear and had made public several times by the business down there that they were led to believe this is going to be six to eight, six to eight months kind of a thing, maybe a year. And now it's multiple years. So these businesses are definitely hurting, and being in the city newsletter isn't handling it. You know, this thing really ought to be on get it done now, you know, instead of like, well, you know, you go down there, you don't see anybody working. You don't see anything going on. You know, it seems like, well, it's the 91 project all over again. So yeah, my last point would be that the strategic plan, the budget, you know, they all get quarterly updates. You say whether you're above or below, behind or ahead, you know, how you're working towards your goals. You know, are you over budget or you under budget? Nothing on this. So when, when's the public going to get some accountability and some transparency about just how much over budget this is and just how far behind it is? Because we all know it's over budget and know it's significantly behind. So I'm kind of wondering when that presentation's going to come up so that we can all know, and there can be a certain level of accountability. You know, I know you guys aren't out there moving dirt, but you guys hired the people that are moving dirt. So at some point, there needs to be some kind of reckoning for both, maybe the contractor, you know, the consultants, whatever, the project, wherever the issue seems to be, we should have a full vetting of exactly just how bad it is and the fact that, you know, a lot of these costs aren't being borne by the city. They're being borne by the people down there. So it's a mess. It's been a mess, and it's going to continue to be a mess for the foreseeable future. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Let's move on to meeting minutes. This, from the city council meeting of April 2nd, 2025. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards in the public on the meeting minutes?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for the meeting minutes.
No? Really?
No.
All right. Let's see. All right. Do you have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Tom and Wes, please vote. Minutes passed. Moving on to consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine matters, status reports of documents covering previous city council action. The items listed on the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. With the concurrence of the city council, a council member or any person in attendance may request that an item be removed for further consideration. Ms. Edwards, you have a couple of recusals to announce?
Yes. Council Vice Mayor Casillas will be recusing herself from Agenda Item 7.4 because she lives within the LMD, and Council Member Wes Beek from Item 7.5 because he lives within the district.
All right. Thank you. Would my colleagues like to pull any items for discussion?
7.1 and 7.3.
Okay. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards on any of the Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards on any of the consent calendar items?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for the consent calendar.
Okay, so can I get a motion on all items except for 7.1 and 7.3?
I moved.
One second.
Wes and Tom, please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, there we go.
And the consent calendar passes.
Okay, we have 7.1, Wes?
I just wanted to get a, just a, just some more information. Sounds like a great program, really excited about how we're going to expand this and just like to hear a little bit more, if that's okay?
Sure. Chief Newman and his team are here to speak to this.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Councilmember speak. And with the mayor's permission, we actually have a short video that can explain everything pretty clearly. It, it comes from Scottsdale, but it's the exact same program and it probably-
Now it's your fault, now it's your fault, buddy.
Hey.
Yeah, okay, yeah, you have my permission.
Okay, thank you.
We are united in purpose and selfless in action to ensure a safe Scottsdale. We have soared in terms of embracing technology. A large component of that technology is our partnership with Flock Safety.
Drone as first responder is one of the most exciting moves in technology. Our ability to get overhead in 45 seconds and start giving real-time intel is remarkable.
We had a friend call in, she was concerned about her friend and she wasn't able to get ahold of her. She gave us the address of the last known location. I had no cameras to check and see if she was anywhere near there. Having the drone, he was able to fly to the complex. The drone was able to capture the female exiting the apartment and it didn't look like she was injured. We were able to save the officers a response out there.
It is a major force multiplier for us, providing more safety to the citizens at home.
Call them the dinnertime burglary series. It impacted such a large group, and you had a lot of people who were afraid. We made an arrest leveraging this technology. And once we made that arrest, the burglary series stopped.
And provides officer safety for our folks on the street.
We had a stolen vehicle hit through the Flock LPR, tried to deploy the DFR drone, and we were able to get on scene and pick up the vehicle and follow it and give updates to patrol, which ended up taking the suspect in custody without incident.
A lot of things we would use helicopters for, we can easily do with the DFR now. Cheaper, more efficiently.
The amount of information that is being pumped out of the real-time crime center by the drone changes the response.
On average, it's 53 miles an hour to get on scene. Our flight time to most calls in that area is less than 85 seconds. It's super hot. But every time we did a battery swap, we didn't see a lag and we were back all within five minutes.
So we're using thermal and we wouldn't be able to search for anybody if we didn't have the night vision.
Having a real-time center technician along with a drone first responder pilot, sharing those feeds with patrol is amazing to watch.
Everything that we do related to DFR is driven by very strong policy.
A log is filled out and all available by Freedom of Information Act. We want everything we're doing to be completely transparent to our community. Flock and Aerodome are seeking to make this better each and every day, much like we're seeking to make our service to our community better.
What you're buying is not only a piece of technology-
You can go ahead and stop it now, thank you.
You're buying the customer service, you're buying the idea, you're buying the drive-
What I want to add on here from-
And the determination.
Thank you. Uh, I don't want it to be a commercial, I just wanted to kind of give an idea. That's a pretty excellent synopsis of what our program will look like. And I couldn't explain it much better than actually with the visual that is already provided. Our program is going to mirror Scottsdale, not on the scale that they have. But I'd like to introduce Lieutenant Gary Griffiths. He's the commander that's overseeing our, our DFR 2.0. And he's been the, the commander that's kind of been with this program since its inception. So first of all, I want to give a shout out to Gary for all that he's done for this program. He's negotiated tremendously with multiple companies and finally landing with Flock. So Gary can kind of go through what our program is going to look like here real briefly.
Sure, thank you, chief. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So as you mentioned, or you heard the chief mention DFR 2.0, and that's kind of the video that you just saw. It's kind of the second iteration of the technology. Back in April 2023, I came and asked to implement a part-time DFR program to see if it would work and be successful here in Corona. The way that that works, you have to have a visual observer on the roof and you have to have a pilot in the station flying the drone. The visual observer does battery swaps on the drones and clears the airspace to make sure there's no planes or other drones in the sky that can cause a hazard. The problem with that is it's just hard to scale because if the drone has a limited range, and so when you try to expand to multiple locations, it increases personnel costs. With the new technology, and I think I mentioned it back in 2023, the FAA was working on approving jurisdictions to operate drones without the visual observer on the roof. So if we can demonstrate through the use of radar and through the use of what's known as ADS-B technology, the transponders that planes give off, we can deploy those drones into boxes like you saw on the, on the video at multiple locations in the city to provide 100% city coverage. And then we just have to have one pilot in the station that can deploy any one of those drones at any time for calls for service. Currently, we're looking at deploying three locations that should provide 100% city coverage, strategically located on city property throughout the city. And then will be manned by a full-time position in the police department. So with that, if you have any questions, I can answer them.
No, that was it for me. I, I just wanted to hear a little more about it. I thought it was pretty exciting, you know, that their trial worked out really well enough for us to expand to cover the whole city. And that was one of the other questions I had, was making sure that it would cover the whole city. And yeah, excited to see this carry forward.
No, great, thank you so much.
Uh, Mayor, I'm sorry, one quick question. Are, are battery changes, is that still a manual process?
No, and that's what's unique with this, this company, Flock. Not only was it the cheapest, they also are the only one that have a solution where the box actually has a robotic arm that will change the batteries for us.
Ah, great.
They said in the video about five-minute downtime, they've improved that down to about two minutes now in talking with other cities. And we'd be the first in Riverside County to deploy it, hopefully.
Great, thank you. Wes, you want to make a motion?
Yes, sir.
No one, no one from the public pulled anything on this, right?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this item.
Got it, okay. Wes, you made the motion? Someone give a second? Passes 5.0, okay, then we had 7.3, that was also US.
Yep, just wanted to call some attention, this is a pretty big milestone for us, I think. I mean, I, as much as I like the fact that we're building things, I also like the fact that we're, you know, making room for what's going to, we're going to build. So I just wanted to ask about, I know we're awarding this contract tonight. When will the project start and when will it be completed?
So, you want to take that?
Yes, we're still anticipating being on track. And it's going to start in the summer, we're anticipating June or July. Once we get the contractor on board, we'll narrow down exactly that date. And the construction or the demolition should be complete before the end of the calendar year. We're shooting for sometime in November, December.
And that's the, the three buildings on the east side of North Mall, correct?
No, there, there's two buildings, two buildings, six units, I believe, and two buildings on the-
Great, that's it, thank you.
No one from the public wanted to talk on that, right?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this item.
Wes, you want to make that motion? Somebody got a second for me? Tony, and please vote. Okay, that item passes, 5.0. We are moving on to communications from the public. This portion of the agenda is intended for general public comment on items within the council's jurisdiction that are not listed elsewhere on the agenda. Please note that state law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking action on these items. Please observe a three-minute limit for comments. And once called upon to speak, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Ms. Edwards, were there any speaker cards?
Mayor, yes, we have two speaker cards for communication from the public.
Okay. Two speaker cards, so come on down to the middle.
Good evening again, Joe Morgan, 2063 Ren. So on the, uh, it, the more I think about this whole fire station thing, the more it, it, I have, I, I have a couple of people that was pretty good friends with before they were on the council. And, and they had certain opinions about doing business in the back room. And the opinion seems to have changed. I noticed that, that when, when the fire station thing came up, well, first, when, when all this stuff came up and we're like, oh, we're going to build this big fire station, we're willing to spend 10, $20 million, you know, push the whole thing through. Either the city manager or the esteemed fire chief, I use that term loosely, put their thumb on the scale and, and, you know, decided who they were going to have build the thing. The other guy came in and says, you're not going to be able to build this. This is going to be too expensive for what you want to do. It was very clear to him as a professional that you weren't going to be able to do it. And then when you decide at some point, well, somebody decided at some point that it wasn't going to get built and you weren't going to build a new fire station, that you're going to remodel it, I'm left thinking, well, hey, did somebody bite off more than what they could chew? And, and ask for more stuff than what was going to fit in the budget? But you spent money towards that goal. You know, you spent taxpayer money towards that goal. And then somewhere in the back room, it got fit, it got changed, the policy got changed. We're going to spend 10 to 20 million dollars, no big deal. Maybe we'll get a bell tower, maybe we'll even get a hunchback for the bell tower. And, and then when you change it, it all gets changed with no fanfare. And then it gets announced in a PowerPoint with the cheeky comment by the city manager, oh, well, we're announcing it today because it was one line at 9:38 in the morning on a Thursday that we're not going to have a new fire station, it's just going to be a remodel. Well, one's left to ask, well, couldn't you have done that before? Wasn't that an option before? Wasn't that on the table before? Nobody ever gave it any serious consideration? It may, it may have been the smartest alternative, given that one of the professionals that was up here said, yeah, you're not going to be able to build it for what you want. But you spent money on it, now it's kind of a different job. One wonders what's going to happen, you going to put it back out to bid since it's a different one? Or just leave it with the other guy, whatever, it's close enough? But the fact that it all happened in the back room because you guys just lapped up the PowerPoint like little kitties licking up milk. Didn't say a word about it, wasn't, didn't seem to be any concern because apparently the Brown Act only applies in here. You can have a, you can have a meeting, you can get all your ducks in a row, you can get the council all, all, all in a line in the back room and not say anything. This is why people don't trust the process. This is why people don't think that, that what goes on here is, is above board. This is why. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
All right, good evening, Council. Chad Miller, Corona resident of 27 years and this year's chairman of the board for the Corona Chamber. So just got some announcements for you guys. Just recently, last week, we had the Free Healthcare Workshop, which was a cybersecurity strategies for healthcare and business leaders. It was hugely successful, very well attended, so that was excellent. Our next big thing coming up is Wednesday, April 23rd. We do have Congressman Ken Calvert in town to share congressional updates as well as a video message from Congresswoman Young, Young Kim. Uh, let's see, we have a Commerce and Cocktails Networking Mixer at the Brass Taps that's happening, uh, let's see. That'll be on Tuesday, April 29th from 5:30 to 7:30. And we have a new nonprofit committee that we're starting at the chamber. I'm super excited about to help our nonprofit community. And let's see, um, we're also hosting the Inland Empires World Trade Conference for Riverside County on Wednesday, May 21st. This is an opportunity for local businesses and industry leaders to engage in conversations around import-export trends, challenges and global trade strategies. I'm sure you've heard some crazy stuff on the news about terrorists. And for some of us manufacturers, that's a great thing, but for supply stuff, it's, can be difficult. So we're getting all these, uh, you know, folks together. We have a great keynote speaker there, as well as we're accepting applications to recognize an exporter of the year. So we are looking for applicants to apply for that. Super exciting award to recognize them for their efforts with exporting, which we, we love and want to do more of that. So I do have applications, you can contact the chamber on the website as well. And lastly, we do have some grand opening and ribbon-cutting ceremonies. West Cliff University will be having their grand opening on April 22nd at 4 o'clock to Mesquite Canyon Road. And then always Best Care Senior Services, Wednesday, the 23rd at 11. And then we have Cisco's Restaurant, awesome food if you haven't tried it yet. We're super excited to celebrate that opening with them on Friday, April 25th at 9 o'clock. Think that's it, uh, hope to see you guys there, super great stuff happening. Thank you much.
Hey Chad, before you leave, I just want to say thank you for, for taking the call. We had a resident that actually we celebrated in this room. He invented or came up with an e-bike concept that apparently one of our large, one of the largest retailers in the country want to pick up and sell. And he has no idea how to manufacture. I connected him with, with Chad and, and hopefully we can work something out where they, we manufacture that here in, in Corona. So thank you for, for connecting and thank you for picking up the phone as always.
My pleasure, anytime.
All right, thank you. Ms. Edwards, no last minute speaker cards?
Mayor, we do not have any more speaker cards.
All right, moving on, public hearings, there's none tonight. Moving on to item 10, administrative reports. It's a proposed operations plan for the Historic Civic Center. Donna Finch, our Community Services Director, will present this item.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor and Council. I am happy to be here tonight to present the proposed operations plan for the Historic Civic Center. This is part of the city's strategic plan goal to designate the HCC as the Center for the Arts. And our staff has been working on this over the past several months, researching other arts programs and arts venues throughout the area to come up with some ideas and concepts that we're happy to share with you today. So I'm going to go ahead and get started. Our ask of the council tonight, and this is not working, there we go. Our ask of the council tonight is that you provide feedback on the proposed HCC operations plan. Okay, and then here is an overview of the items I'm going to be discussing. So I'm going to provide a brief overview and history of the actual HCC campus, an update on the building assessment and some deficiencies that were identified at both the building and the site, an overview of our current programming that we offer that are, that's arts-related, both at the city level and through our arts partners, as well as an overview of the Corona market and its support for the arts. We also have some proposed programming improvements that I'm going to be discussing today, as well as some proposed repairs and maintenance to the building in sight. We also have an estimated operating, operating budget to share and then a proposed implementation plan on how we're going to propose to work through this over the next several years and next steps. So to begin, the campus overview and history, I want to start just by noting that the HCC is an incredibly valuable asset to the city. We've done a terrific job maintaining it and preserving it over the last 100 years. And we are going to do everything in our power to make sure that we are able to make this building last for at least another 100 years, if not more. So just a quick overview of the campus itself, I know everyone's very familiar with it. There's a few different buildings and amenities that have been added to the site over the years since the HCC was constructed. Of course, we have our original HCC building and the annex building that is located on the south side of the property. We have the old PD that's just west of that, which is currently in the process of being demolished. We have our HCC lawn in front of the building, which we've been using over the last several years for programming and events. And then just to the north of the building, we have the Vicentia Activity Center, which is currently programming, programmed for kids' club and adventure camp. But there is opportunity to grow arts-related programming at that site. We also have the HCC gym, which we utilize for sports programming. We have the south lawn, which we do other events and activities there. And then of course, the city hall campus, which we are in today with the council chambers, and then the court building just to the west of that. So here is just a overview of the history of the Historic Civic Center. As you all know, it was constructed over 100 years ago in 1923 when it opened as Corona's second high school. In 1931, the site expanded to include the East Annex Building and it operated as a high school up until 1962, when it became Corona's City Hall. At that time, we operated at City Hall for over 40 years until this building was constructed and opened in 2005. And then City Hall operations moved over here to this site and the HCC was converted to mixed-use programs and leases. At that time, the HCC was also added to the National Register. Then in 2020, the city strategic plan was adopted and it designated the HCC as Corona's Center for the Arts. And we've started to prepare for that and what that could look like, which today we're going to be discussing with the operations plan. So as I mentioned, when the Corona strategic plan was adopted back in 2021, under the goal of sense of place, there was an objective to increase access to arts, culture and recreational activities in the city. And one of the strategies that was identified to do that is to renovate the Historic Civic Center to become the city's premier performing and visual arts center and, as well as designate the HCC as Corona's Center for the Arts and relocate non-art, arts leases. So in order to start planning for this, So in order to start planning for this, we've done just an initial building assessment, very high level to identify any deficiencies within the site. I just want to emphasize again that this building is on the national register. And any repairs that are going to be made to correct these deficiencies will be done according to standards of the Secretary of Interior for rehabilitation. So I just want to make sure we, we emphasize that. So here is an overview of some of the deficiencies that were noted on the building. Again, it's, it's a hundred year old building, but it is in very good condition. We've done a really great job of making sure that we've preserved it to the best of our ability. But as anything, when it becomes 100 years old, there's some improvements and deficiencies that need to be addressed. So through our initial assessment, we've identified some items here. That includes on the building system inadequate fire sprinklers. We've noted some outdated water, electrical and sewer systems that need to be repaired. The HVAC system in the theater is archaic, needs to be updated. The suites require remodeling. We have aging windows and doors that are in need of repair or replacement. Some of the exposed concrete and wood flooring throughout the building is in need of repair. Inadequate restroom facilities that are not appropriately sized for the amount of activity that we would like to eventually see in this space. So that's something that we would like to evaluate further. Interior lighting can be updated. The breezeway is sinking, so we're proposing some repairs to, repairs to that. And then the aging roof is in need of repair or replacement. On the technology side, we've noted some outdated AV systems. The internet and data connection and key card swipes are in need of updating. And then security throughout the building, there are too few security cameras. Access to the building with the doors and locks needs to be improved. And then of course, once these improvements are made, some updated furniture and equipment is needed throughout the building. On the site itself, this is the actual campus. It is, as it's been expanded over the years, we've noted some circulation deficiencies. So some ways to address that, a lot of that will actually be improved with the PD building coming down. It will help to kind of improve some circulation around the campus. But other ways that we can improve that include addressing some inadequate signage, looking at ways to maybe enhance parking throughout the site. There's some ways that we've looked at potentially on Sixth Street. And then of course, looking at improving security throughout the campus itself. We've identified security improvements in the building, but the campus needs some additional lighting improvements and repairs, as well as some additional security cameras. And then the landscaping, it is aging. It could use a refresh, maybe a more cohesive plan to make sure that the plant materials go together and provide a nice visual appearance to the, the front of the building and the surrounding campus. So current programming right now that's arts related, the city actually does quite a bit, both on our own as well as through our arts related partners. We've done just kind of an overview and assessment of the programming that's currently offered right now. We have that, that programming spread at multiple sites throughout the city, including the CCC, the senior center at the HCC itself. And then I mentioned some opportunities to expand at the Vicentia Activity Center. But at the CCC, we offer craft and art related classes and programs for adaptive youth and adults. We do some cooking classes there. We have a variety of dance and music programs and then some partnerships. One is with CNUSD to host their festival of arts that is typically hosted at the CCC center. At the senior center, they also have a variety of arts programs, including drawing, dance, crochet, knitting, quilting and mixed media. And then of course, the HCC has several tenants that currently do amazing arts programs. This includes the Christian Arts Theater, CAT, Corona Art Association, Corona Symphony and Orchestra, the OBC Theater and the YMCA Music School. And then we also do some city related programming here. We've started to build up some program in the theater with the HCC Presents series, some film screenings. We have our New Music and Arts Festival, which is actually this Saturday. We're very excited about that. And then our Summer Street Fair. And then I mentioned the VAC, that's the Vicentia Activity Center just north of the HCC building. We currently operate that right now as a kids' club and adventure camp. There is a lot of program, potential to expand programming into that site that I'll be talking about a little bit later in the presentation. So I mentioned our current HCC leaseholders. We are very fortunate to have several leaseholders that do just very high quality arts programming. And we want to make sure that that programming is successful and sustained even as we continue to, to build out this operations plan. But we do have some non arts tenants in there as well. So the arts related tenants are highlighted and bold. The non arts tenants are the one that are non bold. Most of those non arts leases are in the process of winding down. And as they start to wind down, we will start discussions based off of the directive in the city plan to find opportunities to potentially relocate them. So here is just an overview of the current layout of the building. This is the first floor. On the first floor, we have the Christian Arts Theater in the Annex Building on the east side of the property. We have the Stevens Center in Site 130, Corona Symphony in Suites 140 and 190, Corona Art Association in Suite 145. The theater is of course in Suite 150, Inspire Life Skills in 160, OBC in 170 and the Corona Historic Preservation Society in 185. On the second floor, this is primarily occupied by the United Way and the YMCA. United Way has Suites 200 and 205 and the YMCA operates the Fender Music Program out of Suites 210 and 230 and have administrative offices in Suite 220. So I mentioned, we did analysis of the market, the Corona market, just to see whether or not the market supports expanding arts programs. Most of this was done through the Performing Arts Center feasibility study, which was presented to council last year. But through this study, we found that there is definitely a strong support for expanding arts programs. A lot of that is really based off of the fact that Riverside is a very fast growing population. It's actually the fastest county in the state of California. And Corona alone has some projected population increase. We are anticipated to grow up to 200,000 residents by 2050, which is a 17% increase. And we are home to a mixed diverse, mixed diverse ethnic backgrounds, which supports the demand for more cultural programming. So there's definitely a lot of opportunity to tap into that there. For spending habits, the Corona residents tend to spend above the national average in all entertainment categories. And then this really illustrates the demand for arts activities in Corona and how it's projected to increase over time. So I mentioned the Performing Arts Center feasibility study. This was conducted back in 2023. We presented phase one. 2024, we presented phase two. And it really assessed the feasibility of building a new performing arts center in Corona or renovating the existing one. Through this study, we found the feasibility of having a dedicated performing arts center in Corona, that there was strong support for that and that renovating the HCC to become this center was the most feasible option. The market shows that there is support for active programming in both theater and arts activities with city support to help subsidize operations. And it recommends that the city continue to own and operate the HCC. And at the time that study was presented, we received some direction from council to explore refurbishing the theater and modernizing the entire HCC facility, which is what we've been working on over the past several months with the development of, of the operations plan. So next steps, again, where we are today is to expand program recommendations, evaluate all art program opportunities and what the potential is to expand on what we have, as well as add any new programs to help fill in any gaps. And then evaluate facility needs, renovation costs and next steps to refurbish the HCC. So as we were developing this plan, we looked back at several survey efforts that have been done along the way. One was through our Park and Recreation Master Plan. We did some, some, a lot of engagement and outreach with the community and surveying to identify any types of popular arts programs that the community felt could be successful in Corona. The community surveys indicated that residents want programs that they feel are missing in the city of Corona. And the highest rated programs on the arts side were cooking related classes. 46% of residents in that survey stated that they felt that that was a program that was underutilized or missing here in the city, as well as arts and crafts programs. That 42% stated that. And then cultural arts had a 25% response rate. And then we have some other desired activities that were written in that are listed in that slide as well. On the theater side, through the Performing Arts Center feasibility study, there was some additional surveying that was done to try and identify theater programming interest for our residents. The top three that were identified were musicals at 53%, plays at 45% and family friendly shows at 34%. And then we also just looked at overall market trends throughout the U.S. So what are the arts programs throughout the country that are really growing and we're seeing a, a larger demand and interest for? Those include cooking and baking classes, which, which align with what we found in our Park and Recreation Master Plan survey. That has a 41% growth rate. Arts and crafts programs, 25% growth, photography, 18%, writing, 18% and music making, 16%. Another area where we did quite a bit of research was going out and visiting other arts centers in the local area. We met with several arts centers throughout the region to just learn more about their programming and their operations at these sites. What works, what doesn't work, what are some of the things that we could then model here in Corona at the HCC? We visited five sites in total. Those included the Brea Gallery and Curtis Theater, which is a small 199 seat theater and art gallery. It's very similar to the HCC in that it is downtown adjacent and part of their civic center campus. But this one does not have any programming space. It was just theater and art gallery related. In Fontana, we visited their Art Depot Gallery and Auditorium, which has an art gallery space and programming space. It's adjacent to their downtown and part of their library campus, but there is no theater there at that space. So a little bit different than ours. Irvine had a really actually exciting program, very robust fine arts program. We learned a lot from that visit in particular on some of the actual programming elements that we could really help build up here. They don't have a theater, but they do have an art gallery and a very active programming space. It's about 18,000 square feet in total. And then it is part of their library and park and aquatic campus. We went over to Ranchakookamanga to visit their Victoria Garden Cultural Center. They have a 560 seat theater and event space. It is adjacent to what they call their downtown, which is Victoria Gardens. It's their newer downtown that was built over the last couple of decades. And it is also part of their library campus. And then lastly, Yorba Linda Cultural Arts Center, that is a, again, another smaller theater. It's about 160 seat, but it does have some programming space and it is part of their library campus. So we really learned a lot from those visits and that really helped to shape some of the proposals that we are presenting today. So proposed programming improvements, again, this is based on the research that we identified and some programming opportunities that we believe could be successful at the HCC. I want to emphasize our existing arts tenants are a big part of this programming plan. They have, they're, they're actually running a lot of these programs already. So we are going to make sure that we continue to engage them as we move forward into the next steps to really make sure that we can find a way to continue their success throughout the implementation of this plan. Sorry, skipped ahead. So here is a sample schedule of what a day of programming could look like at the HCC. Fully programmed, we believe this site could accommodate as many as 40 daily activities. Programs would really be dependent on resident interest, on market trends and on instructor availability. But some of the ways that we envision programming could be run here is in the mornings, we would cater to more of the tiny tots, active adults, adaptive population, our seniors. And then in the afternoon, we would start to transition into programming for more school age children as they start to get out of school, as well as local families. In the evening, we'd be looking and targeting more of our active adults and families as well, and starting to engage those areas of the population. Comparison of other cities found that these centers are highly utilized Monday through Thursday on the programming side, where we start to see waning evening interest on Friday and Saturday. Some of the centers are closed on Sunday, but theater productions, reservations, those are activities that really do occur seven days a week. And there will be opportunity for us to be able to, to fit those in, even when we're not actively running program there. So here are some of the proposed visual arts classes. Again, some of these are already being offered at other sites in the city as well as at the HCC through the partner tenants that are currently operating out of there. Culinary arts is something that is, we do a little bit of that at the CCC, but we really want to see that one grow. Again, that's one that was highly requested, both through our, our internal Park and Rec Master Plan surveys, as well as through our market research of just growing trends. Some examples of culinary arts classes that we could offer include baking, cake decorating, regional cuisine, sourdough making, that's a really popular one that's starting to take off. On the fine arts side, we're proposing anime, cartoon, calligraphy, expanding on some painting opportunities, poetry classes. And then jewelry studio, this, this is something new. We really don't do this right now at any of our sites, but there is a, a big market for it. Irvine actually has a really successful jewelry making program. We'd love to see some acrylic jewelry classes in there, some beading, earring making, jewelry repair. And then moving over to kids' arts, we already have a lot of kids' arts programming at the CCC that would transition over to the HCC, as well as working with some of the partners to help expand on their programs. That includes crafts, finger painting, parent in me classes, puppet making, there's a lot of opportunities there. And then messy space ceramic studios. So ceramics is a huge one. And it's something that we are not doing at all. Every center that we visited, we saw very popular active ceramics programs. So this is one we would really, really like to see grow here. We think the Vicentia Activity Center would be a good space to potentially get that up and running. But that includes again, ceramics, candles and soap making, mosaic is something that we could do in that space, scrapbook, scrapbooking, as well as woodworking. And then textile arts, that includes working more with, with textures and fabrics. That includes crochet and knitting, embroidery, quilting, sewing, those types of programs. Moving on to performing arts, so couple, this is really grouped off of the, the spaces that we've identified in the building. So in the classroom area, we would look to do programs such as art history, film series, music history. Moving on to the music studio, again, we already have a lot of very robust programs that we'd love to see grow there and continue to operate. That includes guitar, bass lessons, horns. Musical munchkins is one that we do right now at the CCC that could potentially move over. Piano and keyboarding, private lessons. In the dance studio side, we could, we could do ballet there, folklorico, hip hop, jazz, salsa, merengue. And then in the theater, again, this is an area we really want to capitalize on. We already have great programming done there through Christian Arts Theater. That of course would be continued as well as the OBC productions. We'd also continue to book events through the city there. Utilize it really for community use and community theater. And then reservations is something that we would want to continue offering. And then just proposed general use and programming classes. So we have a lot of spaces that really lend itself to kind of general use, not really specific to arts, but just making sure we're continuing to activate all of the space opportunities we have there. So we have our banquet space in the community room. This could be utilized for art receptions, cast parties when we have theater productions, lecture series, reservations. The front counter, we want to make sure that we have an open and welcoming space when people arrive. They know if they have questions, they have somebody there to greet them, help answer any of those questions. So we'd love to see that kind of build up with potentially putting in a box office there, operating some type of concession stand when we have performances going on. Potentially a gift, a gift shop where we could sell merchandise. There's really a lot of opportunity to grow that. Gallery space. So when we were visiting some of the sites, many of them had galleries where they actually had opportunities to showcase art from local artists in the area. One spot that we thought would be a really good location to do that at the HCC is the circulation areas in the hallway and the entryway, even going up the stairs into the hallway area just on the second floor. We think that would be a wonderful opportunity to really work with local artists, do art shows on a rotating basis to be able to promote their art and even give them the opportunity to sell it. And then HCC lawn, again, we're already actively programming that. We'd love to see that outdoor activity grow. We could do art walks there, chalk art, of course, continue our music and arts festival. We know that that's going to be very successful. And then our summer street fair. And then enhancing wayfinding and connectivity through signage and digital displays throughout the campus. So this again, is just a proposed site plan. It's concepts of where similar uses could really be grouped together throughout the site. Once we get feedback from the council tonight, we will start working with the existing tenants to determine their space and programming needs. So some of this could change based off of what their actual needs are. Right now, we're just kind of proposing some ideas and concepts of where uses could be located throughout the building. So what we've identified here on the first floor is to have admin offices and box office and concessions. Again, right at the entrance when you walk in, making it easily accessible and welcoming to the public. Keeping the theater where it is. To the west of this theater, we are proposing to convert that to a black box or rehearsal space. On the east side, that could be a fine arts area. The community room would stay where it is. The East Annex Building would stay as performing and arts programming space. And then I mentioned utilizing the Vicentia Activity Center for some of the culinary arts and ceramics programs. On the second floor, this is really where we envision more of the music space, the textile arts, the jewelry studio. We think that these areas could lend itself well to those potential uses. Again, I mentioned art gallery is something that could exist throughout those interior circulation areas and hallways. And then that east wing could be a kids' art, potentially messy space area to be able to do some of those additional programs that we have proposed. Proposed operating hours would Proposed operating hours would be Monday through Thursday from 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and then we would Friday close a little bit earlier, as we've seen from our visits, that usage starts to wane into the weekend days and evening hours. So, Friday, we would close at 5:00 o'clock. Saturday, close at 2:00 o'clock. Closed on Sunday for programs. But again, facility rentals and theater productions would be available seven days a week from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Again, we have a lot of partners that are already providing programs. There are other partners that we think that there are opportunity to tap into, to be able to help partner with us to give programs. This includes the business community, other local arts groups, regional and community arts organizations, schools, and then, of course, our current arts tenants. So, proposed repairs and maintenance. Again, we did a high-level assessment of the building to identify just some of the repair and maintenance needs. More formal assessment and scope of work will be needed before we move forward with any of the major improvements. And then, again, want to reiterate, HCC is on the national register, so we will make sure that any improvements that are made are done in compliance with those standards. So, for the site itself, the repairs and maintenance that have been identified include repairing the breezeway area, enhancing some of the trees and landscaping throughout the campus, looking at adding some additional wayfinding signage, potentially a marquee sign in front of the building that helps us really be able to advertise the programs and theater productions that will be scheduled, adding additional security cameras, looking at opportunities for additional parking. I mentioned Sixth Street. We think there might be some opportunity to maybe do angled parking there, as well as looking at some other areas surrounding the campus, putting a sound system throughout the site, and then enhancing our seasonal decor. Estimated cost of that is roughly $1.2 million. On the building itself, we are proposing to, again, a replacement of the HVAC system. I mentioned that earlier. The HVAC in the theater is very archaic. It does need to be replaced. Looking at the roof itself, this is an area that improvement is needed. This would be done very carefully, because we know the roof is part of the historic structure of the building. The tiles would be removed, the underlayment would be taken off, and then the roof structure itself would be inspected to identify any repairs that need to be made. Those, of course, would be conducted. The brand-new underlayment would be put on, and then we would put the existing tiles carefully back in place to make sure that we are preserving that original roof. And then if any of those tiles need to be, if they're damaged and need to be actually replaced, we would look at finding an identical material, identical style, to make sure we're staying true to the historic design and structure of the building. We've also identified, again, the exterior and interior of the building is in need of some additional paint, of course, staying true to the original colors, making sure that we're staying true to the character of the building, upgrading the fire sprinkler system to make sure it's in compliance with all codes, looking at opportunities to remodel and potentially expand the restroom facilities to make sure we have enough restroom sites available when we have a fully activated center. Looking at the existing flooring, opportunities to repair it, that's always going to be our number-one priority, is to try and preserve that existing flooring and make repairs when possible. Looking at the windows and the doors, trying to repair those or replace if needed, sticking with the original structure and design, refinishing the theater interior, looking at opportunities to improve lighting throughout the building. If ADA improvements are triggered or needed, we would address those during this process as well. The dressing rooms behind the stage are in need of modernization, and then renovating the rehearsal spaces, offices, and classrooms to make sure they're up to date with current standards, and the estimated cost of that is at about $5 million. Moving on to the theater, so, the technology is in need of upgrading. That's one area that we really want to focus on to make sure that that theater is ready for high-quality programming. I know we already do a lot there with OBC and with CAT. I know that they would appreciate having an enhanced AV system as well, and we know that that would be a good draw for us to be able to go out and get additional acts into the theater. So, that's an area we want to focus on, not just looking at the AV, but looking at the rigging and opportunities to repair or replace that, looking at the lighting. All of those are areas that we really want to focus on and address, and estimated cost for that is roughly $500,000. And then lastly, the proposed furniture and equipment. So, once we renovate and start to make some repairs and maintenance on these sites, we want to make sure that we have all the proper equipment to be able to operate those properly. That includes looking at additional tables and chairs, classroom AV, banquet seating, benches and stools, work areas, whiteboards, supplies and equipment, both for our arts programs, as well as any culinary programs, a kiln for ceramics and pottery, display cases, workstations and computers, storage and cubbies. Typically, those types of costs, known as FFNE, is about 15% of the total project cost. So, that's what we used as the estimate here, which puts us at a little over $1 million. So, total costs all combined, we're looking at $7,705,000. Some potential funding sources that we are going to actively pursue include grants. The National Park Service has a Historic Preservation Fund that we will be applying to, to try and raise some funds for these maintenance and repairs. Also, looking at the National Trust for Historic Preservation and funding opportunities there, the California Cultural and Historical Endowment. We've also already started to do asks with our local, federal, and state legislators for funding for this. That's something that we're going to continue to pursue through their community assistance programs. And then, of course, we also are doing a major revitalization project of the downtown as a whole. So, any funding opportunities that may come up through the downtown revitalization is something we could definitely look at. So, moving on to the operating budget, so, just looking at projected revenues, we're anticipating that we'll be able to bring in about $619,000 at year three of operations as we start to build up programming and events, both within the program space, as well as the theater. For classes in open lab, we're estimating about $275,000. Room renovations, both, room reservations, excuse me, both for the community room, as well as the HCC lawn, estimating about $32,000 combined. Sales for concessions, for art, for merchandise, looking at just under $10,000 there. And then, of course, our existing arts tenants will remain. Their leases generate just over $200,000, about $205,000, and that includes CPI. And then theater use, reservations, we would continue to reserve the theater right now that's done at an hourly rate. With the improvements that are being proposed, we feel that we'd be able to generate about $40,000 a year from reservations, as well as continuing our performing arts agreements with CAT and OBC. We anticipate about $40,000 from that, and then our HCC presents shows estimate about For staffing needs, we anticipate needing about two-and-a-half full-time staff. So, that includes 50% of a recreation supervisor, 100% of a new program coordinator that would oversee operations of both the theater and the program side. And then, under that coordinator, we would have two assistant recreation coordinators, as are both part-time positions. One would focus on the theater, really making sure that we're identifying theater performances that can go in there and focus on getting those reserved and booked. The other would focus on the programming side, working with the contract instructors, as well as with the tenants, to make sure that programming is running well and that we're providing support there as best as we can. An office assistant would help facilitate program reservations, as well as box office support. And then, community services leaders, those are really the backbone of our operations. We're proposing about 120 hours of leaders to be able to help facilitate setups, as well as guided activities. The rest are really contract costs, as well as volunteer opportunities. So, right now, we operate a lot of our programs on the contract instructor model. That is a 60/40 split, where 60% of the revenue generated from that class goes to the instructor, 40% goes to the city. So, that's a model that's been very successful for us. A lot of cities utilize that throughout the area, and we would continue to hopefully utilize that with any new classes that we would start up at the HCC. A theater tech is something that we want to make available, both for our partners, our tenants that operate theater productions there, as well as any theater groups that reserve the site, or any productions that we book. We would have a contract theater tech that would be a pass-through cost that would be available to them if needed. And then volunteers, again, we have a very robust volunteer program, as we saw with the award that we received today from CPRS. We want to really build those volunteers and utilize them over at the HCC as best as possible. So, marketing the site, of course, once it's up and running, we want to make sure it's successful. We're getting the word out as best as possible. We would produce an annual season brochure for our theater productions, make sure that that is out and available, so everybody knows what we have going on at the HCC. The art exhibitions, we would propose to do three times a year, and do a program for that is roughly $1,000. Adding additional pages to our existing Corona Connection brochure, we're estimating at $7,000. Enhancing our digital and social media advertising, $2,500. And then doing an annual open house event at $2,500 puts us at $23,000 in marketing. So, when we combine all of those costs together, including security, adding in utilities, and then just general maintenance of the building, we're looking at an estimated operating budget of $829,000 annually. Again, factoring in the revenue that I mentioned earlier, $619,000, the differential rate there is about $210,000 that we would anticipate would be the annual subsidy on the city's end to operate the site on an annual basis. In order to help potentially offset that subsidy, there's a variety of opportunities. It includes potentially looking at naming rights for different spaces, looking to help work with our Parks Foundation, as well as maybe any additional friends groups that are dedicated specifically to the arts. Grant-funding opportunities include the Corona Arts Council, the Inland Empire Foundation, National Endowment for the Arts, and then the arts-area nonprofits, and also potentially looking at an endowment fund. So, implementation plan, we have a six-year plan that's identified here on how we would hope to phase this in now through, I'm sorry, 2026 through 2031. Program enhancements, we anticipate can begin as early as fiscal year '26. Again, as those non-arts tenants leases expire, we would start to then begin programming some of those spaces with arts-related programs. That would start to occur in '26 and then continue through '27 and '28. Official planning and design, where we start working with the partners, identifying their needs for space, as well as programming, that would occur, again, immediately beginning in fiscal year '26. And then we would start to phase in some of those repairs to the building, as well as to the campus and the technology upgrades, as those spaces become available and funding becomes available. We anticipate that starting in 2027 and continuing throughout 2031. Staffing needs would start to ramp up, and we would begin adding additional staff in '27 and '28, and then looking for supplemental funding opportunities all along the way to help offset those costs and impact to the city. So, next steps, once we get some direction from the council tonight, would be to implement the operational improvements that do not require capital investments or changes to the existing leases. We would finalize the scope of work for facility maintenance and repair projects, and then start working with our HCC art leaseholders on integrating HCC programming, identifying their needs for the building, and how we can help facilitate that through the operations plan. As the non-arts leases start to expire, we would begin working with them to start relocating them, and then remodel and reprogram rooms as they become available. So, again, our ask tonight of the council is that they provide feedback on the proposed HCC operations plan. I do want to note that we presented this to the Parks and Recreation Commission on April 8th, which was last Tuesday. It was very well-received. They were supportive of the plan, but they did recommend it for city council's consideration. But wanted to note that the council is considering any unknown risks that may be discovered during the maintenance and repair activities, and that includes identifying potential need for seismic improvements, asbestos remediation, and lead-based paint remediation, which is all things that we will consider as we start to move forward through the improvements. So, that concludes my presentation.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Finch. Before we go to the public and then back to my colleagues, I want to make a couple comments. So, when that presentation was presented at the Parks and Rec, there was quite a bit of anxiety that came out of that amongst some of our tenants at the HCC. And Amanda, Dawn, someone should have given you a heads-up that we were going to be having this discussion, so I very much apologize that that didn't happen. I do want you to know that you are respected, you are definitely part of our future, and I'm very confident that staff is going to work with you to meet your individual needs. And then, our Corona History Preservation Society also was very uneasy, I believe, with all these remodels and things that were going to be happening at the HCC, that some of the historical, or all of the historical elements, would it be considered, Ms. Finch, you addressed that. But I would like Mr. Ellser, city manager, to provide some assurances or just clarification on what that's going to look like.
For sure. Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to say thank you for everyone who's here tonight to talk about this subject. We're really excited to help revitalize and continue the long-term success for the historic civic center. And so, seeing a number of our community partners here is fantastic. Speaking to the historical elements, of course, we're very interested in preserving it. This is a community gem. We have very few buildings like it, and so, any renovations or repairs or maintenance, of course, will adhere to the National Park Service Historic Preservation Program guidelines. That's important. That speaks to the how that we go about doing that work, and we're absolutely committed to that. And as far as the tenants go, this is step number one in working through a new plan that will help really ensure a vibrant center long-term. And so, assuming that we get direction to proceed tonight, we're excited to sit down with each one of our tenants and talk through what your needs are, and try to make sure that we're positioning the building so that it works for you and the community as a whole. So, very much committed to that and excited to continue the conversation. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Edwards, are there speaker cards from the public?
Mayor, yes, we have nine speaker cards for this item.
Go ahead and start lining up, please. Hi, Kim.
Mayor, hi, council. Kim Maybon, 1252 Doris Lane. I'm also president of the Corona Art Association. While we find this very exciting, because obviously we're an arts organization, we're very excited to see that the city is committed to bringing more arts and culture into the city. But I have some pretty big concerns with this. I'm happy to hear that they're willing to talk to us, but we've been called a partner through all of this, yet no conversation has been had with us in the development of this plan. If we're supposed to be a partner, we should have been part of the conversation. So, I ask that, moving forward, that we do become part of that conversation and that we're heard. This plan has us asking a lot of questions, which my secretary and treasurer, Becky, coming up next, is going to raise some of those questions, so that you know what's on our mind. And then, from, I also serve on the Board of the Chamber of Commerce, I'm concerned about those organizations that you're going to try to help relocate. I don't really have much confidence in them being able to find comparable facilities at the rates that they're currently paying. And it would really hurt a lot of these nonprofit organizations who have been supporting this community and this city for so long. So, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Kim. Good evening.
Hi, everybody. I am Becky Floyd. I live in Corona, and I'm the secretary treasurer of the Corona Art Association. First of all, the Corona Art Association is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit community arts organization incorporated in 1963. We are a tenant of the HCC. We are not a subsidiary of the city. I think that the plan is ambitious, and it would be wonderful for the people of Corona. My concerns are not with the plan for the building itself. I think all of that sounds amazing. Our concerns are with how it's going to work afterward. I am comforted a bit about this idea that, you know, they'll start working with us soon, and so, I would like to provide our input tonight. So, because there could be some serious unintended negative consequences for the arts nonprofit tenants that are in the HCC currently. To begin with, we're concerned about the disruption to our activities during construction. Where will we go? Will we be able to operate? Will we have to pay rent during the rehabilitation? Will we be able to do that if we cannot operate? No, we won't. What will CAA space look like after the construction? Our current space is marked on the plan proposal as, quote, "fine arts," a space for various art classes. Will it become a fee-based classroom? Will CAA have a private meeting space somewhere for our meetings, for our art shows and receptions, for our Mac cutter and art supplies? Will we have a home, like we do now? Will we still be able to host our own classes? Will we have to pay fees to use the art classrooms? Will we have to run our classes through the city's contract class programs? We won't be able to get grants if we can't operate our own programs. We will not be able to pay our rent if we also have to give the city 40% of the class fees. Will the city force the art tenants to submit to the contract class model that's used at the Circle City Center? For example, the city contracts with Creative Brain to have art classes at the CCC. Creative Brain hires instructors who teach the art classes. The city collects the registration fees from participants and pays Creative Brain 60%. Then, Creative Brain pays its Then Creative Brain pays its instructors, who are employees. Corona Art Association has no employees. We are run exclusively by volunteers, and we cannot have employees. We don't have the infrastructure to support it, and with labor laws the way they are, that's how it would have to work. We're worried about losing our autonomy. We're worried that we'll be forced into a contract fees-based system that we'll have to be paying rent and paying for a classroom space. We're worried about a lot of things, and I'm out of time. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'll try and talk fast. I so appreciate you, Jim, trying to take down the temperature a little bit, and individually, I love you all. So just know that this is said with love, but also a lot of reservation. I am Amanda Calcanis. I run OBC Theater, and I am super conflicted, because I am excited about 95% of this, 90%, 90% of this. I know that most of you on council know how OBCD contributes to the city, but this is for those of you that don't, or don't see its value. I'd like to briefly remind you, OBCT produces Broadway-quality productions on the HCC stage. In addition to our normal operations, though, we give hundreds of hours of time a year and tens of thousands of dollars in resources to the city's special events, like the holiday lighting, not only to make them magical, but to make them unforgettable. We put hundreds of our hours of our own time and our performers' time into the summer concerts, the street fairs, Fourth of July Parade, Hollow Week and Events, State of the City Addresses, not for the accolades, because most of the time, the city gets full credit for what we do. I don't do it for the credit. We do it because we love the city, we love this community, and we love the staff that we get to work with, because they're amazing. When the HCC needed work a few years ago, we not only fought to have that work done, but we gathered the volunteers, and we personally paid for the paint, for the stage, and for the inside of the HCC. I fully support and have been advocating for all of the repairs that this building needs for years, and I think that pushing it to be an art-focused campus is a wonderful, inspiring goal. I agree with all of the repairs. I say yes to that whole slide. It was super disappointing to not be included in the conversation and to see it go before commission, and commissioners just to pass it through without ever asking. If the commission had sent it back, that would have been the end of this conversation. I understand that this is considered high-level pie-in-the-sky planning. I also understand how easily a direction from you, the council, can get taken and run with, and we can all be forgotten. I have been incredibly honored to work with Jason Lass, David Montgomery Scott, and Donna Finch, and city staff, but they leave. So you're saying, like, it's okay, we'll take care of you? I love Jason, and now Jason's gone. And so for us, that's super uncomfortable, just to take your word that one day that proposed plan will be gone. I want to make sure that in the planning, this doesn't happen. I appreciate Donna and Jason taking the time to listen to our concerns, but I want to make sure that we aren't discounted. That wouldn't be fair to our members. The future proposed HCC design looks great in theory. I know the future plans are just a vision for what the campus could look like, but I strongly believe any future building plans that don't start by including all of the organizations that are currently calling that place home is a bad place to start. CAT, CSO, Corona Arts Association, CHIPS, and OBC Theater are all not listed on that future plan, and none of us fit into that future plan. We all can't, I'm sorry, I'm going to go over. We don't fit into that vision plan, sharing space. CAT, ourselves, CSO, cannot all use performing arts at the same time. We all use them currently, all at the same time.
Thank you, Amanda. You and OBC are doing a great job. Appreciate it. Next, which Don's coming up next?
Good evening, Mayor Steiner and council members. It's good to see all of you, always is. Yeah, it's been kind of an interesting week, and thanks for, Mayor, thanks for the assurances. That does help a little. The Corona Symphony Orchestra is the mothership of our 501(c)(3), and on the campus is the Corona Symphony Conservatory. So it's, which is comprised of somewhere between 80 to 100 students, music students, and all we teach is violin, viola, cello, and string bass, just the string instruments. And that's because string music education was not, and is not, or was not, offered in the school district when we started 12 years ago. We do have string music education in CNUSD now, fortunately. So right now, we have 85 students in this current semester. We're about halfway through that semester. And got word that we're going to be relocated. Donna assured me that they would find a home for us upstairs. I had to start thinking about upstairs a lot, about the logistics of the business we have there. With these 85 students, they're anywhere ranging from six years old to 18 years old, and I'm looking at, I'm not sure where upstairs will be. I don't think anyone knows yet, but we need nine to 10 classrooms to run our business. We have 12 teachers on payroll, and it takes nine to 10 rooms, individual rooms with doors on them, because, you know, they get allowed, those violins sound really squeaky. And anyway, that's what our requirement is. When I started thinking about upstairs this week, I went up and started looking at where the YMCA is, and they're totally full up there, and there's no such thing as sharing space, as Amanda was talking about. We can't run two businesses in one location, doesn't work. And anyway, and so I'm not sure where we would go, but I started thinking of how are our young cello students with expensive cellos, and how are young string bass students are going to walk up and down those stairs with very expensive instruments? It's dangerous for them. They have to use two hands to hold their instrument. They can't hold the string bass with one hand and rail on the other. I'm not sure how that's going to work. I started thinking about the fact that we have three orchestras, beginning, intermediate, and advanced, and we have to have music stands going up and downstairs to make that happen. I'm concerned about the logistics, and bottom line, I would like to stay where I'm at. That makes sense for us. Thank you.
Thanks, Don.
Evening. My name is Don Fuller. I used to play string bass. I played in concert orchestras and in various jazz bands and small combos, and I was almost So, and I carry it with one hand, by the way, with one hand over the shoulder, by the way. And clearly, the place needs a lot of work. Everybody seems to agree on that. I just wrote down some notes here, because I don't know as much about the details of some of these much more articulate people than I. I think you should listen very carefully to the people who have a vested interest in the place, and some of those have spoken here, and you should be careful about dislodging those who are already working there. If you're going to work with them to find someplace, you better work with them to find someplace and just not hold up an empty promise, because they are due, they are due their process as well. Due process, what a concept. I think the cost of construction might be difficult to plan for, given that this country is now dealing with the tariff of the weak, and you don't know what materials might cost, construction lumber from Canada, construction steel from China. Due to a limited seating capacity, the auditorium over there still doesn't really qualify as a performing arts center. I think it was turned down for that reason before. I may be wrong about that, and will be corrected on that, but it still is not really a very big place. You mentioned having a rock concert. I can't imagine having a rock concert in there. And going over my list here of stuff, good luck getting help with federal funding for the arts with the current convicted felon in the White House. Thank you.
Thanks, Don.
Good evening, Mayor Steiner and city council. Appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening. My name's Rich Winn, and I'm representing the Corona Historic Preservation Society with regard to this proposed plan. CHPS supports the concept, but more details need to be presented before city council should give a green light to this project. For the last 20 years, city departments have consulted with the Corona Historic Preservation Society as the stewards of Corona's historic past. Whenever changes were being considered to the HCC campus, CHIPS was consulted, period. Neither study mentioned in the staff report, the '23 and '24 studies spoke with or considered input from CHPS. It appears that the environmental analysis in the staff report may be flawed. The presence and abatement of asbestos and lead paint concerns expressed by the Parks and Recreation Commission would have voided the applicability of the sequoia exemption, the common sense exemption, and would have required a sequoia study, in my understanding. Architecture is an art. If you want to know where that comes from, go look at the front of the Historic Civic Center. There are 14 vaire relief escuttsions around the building, and the one for arts has a picture of a painter's palette with brushes, has a picture of a column representing the architecture, and a scroll, which drawings, paintings, and music are written on. So get with it. Cities like all over Southern California, Riverside, Pasadena, Los Angeles, and many more, have considered architecture as an art. Safeguarding the character and integrity of the very fabric of the building to be used for an arts campus is of utmost importance in creating an appropriate and inspirational setting for the arts. Two slides in the presentation regarding proposed building repairs and maintenance, and proposed site repairs and maintenance. I was going to comment on that in great detail, however. Donna was very complete in mentioning, for the first time since this whole project started, the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation of Historic Buildings. CHPS is the community representative for the architectural and historic preservation aspect of arts and culture. Therefore, it is not only a fitting tenant to remain in the arts campus space, but a valuable steward of the space. And you may be wondering why I am up here speaking so passionately about this. I did most of the research, my wife and I did the writing of the nomination of the
Thank you, Mr. Winn.
I am Doris Osco. I'm a member of Corona Historic Preservation Society. I was Wes Beeks' teacher in the seventh or maybe the ninth grade. I don't wish to use that as...
Do classes run long?
However, I wish to reinforce what Rich Winn has said in terms of the Corona Historic Preservation Society, a tenant in the Historic Center. I heartily endorse extension of the arts, to continue the arts. Corona has done amazing things with music, and with dance, and with theater, and with art, with the Corona Art Association. In recent years, they have come forward, and we need to come forward more. However, don't throw out the baby with the bath. As a tenant, Corona Historic Preservation Society concerns itself with the art of architecture, which Rich mentioned. When we talk about the art of creating buildings which are historically sound and right and preserving them, so it's a matter of history, it's a matter of art, and the Historic Civic Center is not big enough to contain, I feel, the plans which have just been presented to us, enormous. Maybe we need a facility somewhere else in the city which is totally dedicated to the arts, which can encompass all those things, from cooking, culinary textiles, to the dance and the music and the fine arts.
Thank you, Doris. Chad's coming back up.
Yes, I'm still Chad Miller, and this time I'll be speaking on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. I think I did before as well. But for the nonprofit committee on this one, that's newly forming, so of course, it sounds like you've made your way into another debacle, because all this is, sounds like incredible. However, it doesn't come at a cost, a cost to those who would be negatively affected to have to find a new home. There would be costs incurred in moving, and as my counterpart, Kim, said, you know, to find some equivalent space at an equivalent price might be difficult, if not absolutely impossible. So I know that would bear a burden on them. As far as communication, it sounds like there could have been some better communications leading up to this point. Wish I had the nonprofit committee going and leadership and that to have helped along that way. So if there's any way to currently leverage that group that's coming, whether we can help facilitate, communicate, collaborate, or navigate this process, if a hybrid model where only arts-focused organizations can be in this building, that's one decision that's made, and then there's like, you know, decisions and things that have to happen after that. If you find out that there's a hybrid model that can work, where you prioritize the items that were listed of, hey, look, this is a really great need. Ceramics is a huge need, fantastic. Does that really take up the whole building? So I guess I would implore you just to consider all those things. Is it really necessary to remove all non-art's-based organizations out of there? I know the YMCA operates the United Way. We heard several examples of that that are there. They would not make that, so, and just the limited space that's out there. So just consider all that, but if we can, the chamber can leverage our nonprofit community or our groups, please let us know. We're glad to help in that. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Mary Witten. I have a Corona mailing address, but technically, I live in Temescal Valley, so I hope you don't kick me out. When we bought our home in Sycamore Creek, the guy said, "Change all your addresses to Corona," so I did. So 70 addresses later, I found out that Temescal Valley is okay too. But technically, I used to live in Anaheim Hills for about 27 years. I've been here in this area for about seven years. And even though I have a Corona mailing address, I identify with Corona as well as Temescal Valley. I'm involved with the Temescal Valley, you know, Heritage Foundation. I belong to the CHIPS Foundation, the Corona Heritage Preservation Society. I was a math teacher for 41 years. I was a history teacher for a while, but then I became just math. So I have an interest in logistics, you know, math people are kind of interested in logistics. And the presentation tonight kind of changed my whole speech. The reason I'm here is I wanted to plead with you to recognize that CHIPS is an arts organization, because they are helping to make sure that some of the changes in the city and the civic personal buildings are, and they authorize grants to keep the historical accuracy of many of the upgrades of some of the people in the area. But in listening to the program tonight, you guys maybe haven't actually experienced trying to use this facility on a daily basis. Today, I was coming out of the post office, and I was sitting in traffic 15 minutes just to get up to Sixth Street, because VAC was opening up, and people were double parking and whipping around each other. There is almost no parking for this location, folks. And I don't know if you're going to build a parking structure in order to facilitate all these wonderful ideas, but unless you have parking, it just destroys the whole concept. Basically, a lot of these ideas are wonderful, but you have a much smaller space than you actually realize. The size of that theater, I mean, that's, you know, a high-school-sized theater. It's not designed for major productions. If you're going to wipe out that parking If you're going to wipe out that parking lot, or the police building, or whatever it was, used to be, again, I'm not from the area, I don't know it very well, and put up like a five-story parking structure, well, then you can grow your activities that you're envisioning here. But I think at this point, it's somewhat of tunnel vision. You've got great ideas, but not the space to make them happen. So I don't know how that can be resolved. But I would like you to consider that not only the Corona Arts Association, but the Corona Historic Preservation Society really are pivotal to the HCC building at this point. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments.
Joe Morgan, 2063, ran. I wasn't going to speak on this, but then I came back, it seemed like the same theme kept coming up that I seem to be banging on all the time about you guys. You guys don't listen. You have a tremendous amount of hubris, and you seem to think that you know better than everybody else, or at least the staff does, you know, and I'm particularly looking at the city manager, who seems to be like a particular hubris factory. You seem to be the number-one national producer of hubris. And you seem to think that you could, just by force of will, you can make stuff happen. You had a proposal to build a performing arts center downtown, and you passed on that, so now we're going to get apartments. So, you know, to make, to make this square peg fit in a very small 100-year-old round hole at the Historic Civic Center, you can already see. And the fact that you didn't even get a hold of the stakeholders or bring them in, and talk about how their programs would work in this space, I had no, I had no idea. I was, I guess I shouldn't have thought any different. I should have just assumed that it wasn't going to happen because you don't ever talk to anybody anyways, you know, but I kept thinking just, oh, I was listening to the plan, it all sounds great, until I hear the succession of people who were not involved in it. What in the hell? What in the hell? I mean, and to think, CHPS and Inspire Life Skills are going to be out in the market, paying market rate for an office, you know, for some kind of operating thing, and it's maybe news news, but not everybody paints at a museum, you know. Historic Preservation Society brings awareness to the beauty and the art and the architecture around us. They don't build buildings. You don't go to a museum and paint a picture all the time. So it's laughable to not consider them an art organization, that they're not, they're not involved in the same way as somebody who's making a pot. Somebody made the stuff on the front of the building, but not everybody is going to be carving statues. Appreciation of the art is just as important as making the art. It's such a, just, it's so ignorant. And then you're tossing Inspire Life Skills out? What in the hell? You're going to give them a, someplace in this building? You know, you're already giving a sweet, a sweet deal to Calvert below market rate. Why just bump his ass out and let Inspire take over their spot? You know, it's laughable. You really ought to be ashamed of yourself. You really ought to be ashamed of yourself.
All right, thank you for your comments. Let's bring it back to my colleagues. There's no more speakers, right?
Mayor, we do not have any more speaker cards.
Bring it back up. Comments, Tony?
I need a minute to absorb all this. Do you mind coming back to me?
Okay, we can come back to you. Wes?
I have a lot of notes. I don't want to go through all of them. I just want to hit on a couple of things. One, I think the tenants that are here tonight, thank you for coming, but they wouldn't have been here unless I called them. And I shared with them the presentation, because I didn't know, I thought that, I thought that they knew what was going on, and said, hey, by the way, here's this presentation, you guys, you know, if you didn't see it. And I was shocked to hear that they hadn't given any input. And they all acknowledged the fact that, yes, and I acknowledge the fact, the building does need a lot of help. I think just the fact that the staff didn't know that the building was remediated before, you know, when it stopped being the Civic Center and became the Historic Civic Center, the city went and remediated. You know, Kevin Stabill led that program from the beginning and, you know, worked with the CHPS to restore what they could with a very limited budget because all of it was going into this building. And I'm excited to see, let's go forward with repairing some of the things that couldn't happen in 2005, and, you know, getting those improvements that have been waiting for so long. And I'm really happy to see that we're gonna, you know, we want to put a new AV system and a new sound system, so the folks there, I know that, you know, poor Amanda, I've called her so many times just to, you know, get doors open or how to do things, and I know that she gets, you know, calls from other folks, just even in the city, to learn how to do things. So I'm excited to see all this stuff go forward. I think that the proposed plan of where we're going, I have some concerns with the culinary piece. I think a poll isn't necessarily market study. I looked around to see, you know, what culinary classes there were, you know, absence of RCC or UCI or one of the other things, and there isn't any. People, they have classes at restaurants, very few. There's a couple purposely-built culinary pieces, I know the one in Irvine. They're mostly in Orange County, and they're pretty expensive. And so there's a reason why it's not being done here, because I don't think there's a market for it. I think people like the idea of it, but a poll isn't a market study. I agree on the ceramics because I see ceramics everywhere. These HOA buildings have ceramics. I think, you know, lots of opportunity for that, and also the cost, a million bucks for, to put in kitchen, teaching kitchen, I don't see it. And I didn't see it in the, even the $5 million mark, I think it's going to be very, very expensive to build something on the culinary arts side. So before diving into, you know, all the pieces and parts and asking too many questions, I really think that I'm okay with, let's go forward with a plan for the repairs. I do think that we need to go back to our partners and the folks that have been there and are contributing to the city, and, you know, let's take a step back and, you know, have them give some input, ask some questions, like, you know, one of the things I think on the very last slide or second-to-last slide was about integrating them into our plan. Does that mean, you know, as Becky said, that we'll be hiring them to give classes? Will they still operate their own programs? And there's lots of questions, and I think that sometimes when we give direction, staff uses that language to kind of, you know, push forward. And I just, I don't want to push forward with the nuts-and-bolt pieces, and I know that we'll work with everybody, and I think we'll try and be fair, but in the end, I think there'll be some clashes. Like, I look at what the Y is doing, I talked to Don a little bit about how his classes are set up, and I'm worried that, you know, it's going to impact somebody, and I think in the end, staff's going to say, that's council direction. And I don't want to put staff in that position that they're having to do that. I don't think that we should be in that position either, so I'm for going forward with, you know, let's figure out what the repairs are, let's figure out what it's going to take to move forward with all the other pieces. But I think the actual plan itself, I think, needs a little bit more time, and I'd like to table that part until we can get a better handle on how it's going to affect the folks that use those spaces now. And I like the idea of all of it. I, you know, I have, like I said, I have a ton of questions on some of those things that even came up even while I'm, you know, was going through this today. So that's kind of my, at least my comments.
Okay, Tony?
Yeah, I have a, Donna, I have a couple of questions for you. The YMCA is there now, hi Audrey. Are they moving out, or are they going to stay there as this process goes on?
We have not received word of the YMCA moving out.
But as the remodels take place, would YMCA still be there?
The admin portion is a non-arts use, so that is one of the ones that we had proposed would be relocated. But they do operate a music program, and that is an arts program, so that is factored into the programming plan.
Okay. And for the record, I'm a big fan of musical munchkins. I've graduated through three classes of it, so I can strum the guitar pretty good. The Corona Art Association, what would be the plan for them?
All of the arts uses are planned as to continue them as leases, not to transfer them over to a contract class model. That is not the intent. So to continue their, allowing them to operate their lease and their programs independently, and factoring those programs in as part of the arts-related programs that we offer at this facility as a whole.
Okay, so obviously, you're, I've always thought you were a really good speaker, but if I understand you correctly, the Corona Arts Association operates there today, they're beloved, it's, after all the remodel and everything, they would still be operating there afterwards, right?
That is the proposal. If the council provides direction otherwise, then we would move forward with that, but that is the proposal for now.
Okay, cool. And then, got a list here. Musical munchkins, Corona Arts, okay. OBC Cat, they're going to operate pretty much like they are now? You're not turning the stage around or anything like that, right?
Correct. The proposal is to maintain the performance agreements that we have with both of them and for their programming to continue.
All right, very smart, never piss off Amanda. And then you heard Don Kindred. Is the plan to put those guys upstairs, the violin kids?
So the plan is to discuss what their spatial needs are and their programming needs, and then once we identify what that is, then we would move forward with determining appropriate location for that.
Okay, fair enough. And United Way, are they, are those dudes staying there, or are they moving, or what are, what are they doing?
United Way is a non-arts program and tenant, so based off of the strategic plan, the proposal is to relocate all of the non-arts tenants.
Okay, got it. And then last but not least, CHPS. I do have thoughts on CHPS, and I've put some thought into this and talked to a couple people, some smart people. I know, I don't think this is going to get voted on today, I think this is going to come back, but I haven't heard the other four say it. Yeah, but I would like CHPS to consider relocating their board meetings to the Heritage Room. I think it would be very wise for them to meet there, and I think it would promote the Heritage Room. And if CHPS could make the Heritage Room work, I think that would be a better place for them. So, but they need to have board meetings and members speak and all that, too, so. And I actually am not part of CHPS anymore, but I think that would be a brilliant move for them, and they may think otherwise, and I would respect them if they did. So I'm just throwing that out there in my comments. And then with that, with what Wes said, and I think the others will say, I'm really happy that, that after years of neglect and people saying, these doors need to be repaired, and the overpass is sinking, and the windows need a lot of help, it's true, it's very true. So for you and your team to tackle that and to look at that and come to the council meeting and propose that is very honorable and very respectful, and I thank you deeply for that. The building was built in 1923, it is 102 years old, 101 years old. So I'm really happy about that and the love that you're willing to put into it, and I want to promote that positivity. And that, Mayor, my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, thank you for the presentation, Ms. Finch, and thank you for everyone for attending, for everyone who called and texted and emailed. I really do appreciate your comments and sharing your thoughts. You know, I think back to when we, when I first joined the city council, and the conversation about having the HCC be the Performing Arts Center was actually one that preceded our tenure on council. I remember a committee meeting in the boardroom upstairs, and it was previous council that had thought about making the HCC a performing arts campus, an arts-exclusive campus. And then there was this conversation of, the city of Corona actually needs a larger performing arts center, and that took some time, but we had a feasibility study and completed, and really looked at what that would, what that would turn into. And the reality is that it would be a consistent, subsid, a considerably subsidized endeavor. There was never a plan before us to have a performing arts center built out, a new one built out in the downtown. But there was a study assessing whether or not residents in our community could sustain a performing arts center of 300, 500, whatever the capacity is. And I'm really glad that we did the performing arts center study. In that process, we discovered by assessing the assets that we currently have, that the HCC center was underutilized. We had some really great comments about how the HCC could be improved to make it meet the needs of what we were seeking in a possible new performing arts center. And so to me, this is part of that continued conversation. And so I agree that this is not the date to make decisions. I think this is another moment in this process where we're taking an input and we're trying to flesh out where we go as a community. I like the vision of having and honoring the performing arts in our city by having a dedicated campus and a dedicated center to the performing arts. Now, I agree with everyone and with the assessment of all of the improvements. That seems completely, you know, non-controversial and overdue, and doing so in a respectful way that also follows national guidelines for historical buildings. But it does seem that we need a little more input when it comes to site planning, when it comes to programming. And so I wonder if this could be an appropriate, you know, study session, study item, now that we've had study sessions as part of, at the start of a meeting. I wonder if maybe we can break it up, where we can have a conversation about site planning, or we can have a conversation about programming as we keep fleshing out this plan. What I do know is that collectively, as a city, we have agreed in our strategic plan to create a sense of place, and one of those things that we, as a collective, have said is important to us is to have an area that is dedicated to the arts. I want to honor what our residents have shared through a year-plus process in the strategic plan that they've identified. And so, so yeah, I'm excited about continuing this conversation. I am glad and happy to have continued input, and I want us to keep going in that direction. So thank you all for the work that you do for the residents in the city of Corona to make our community a better place to live, and I hope that we can continue moving forward together to make this a really good, a really, a really great center for the arts. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Tony, you good?
Thank you, Mayor. There's a lot to process because I watched this, or I'm sorry, I watched the presentation and I read it over a couple of times, and, you know, I'm listening to Ms. Finch, I wouldn't have said that this was a fully fleshed-out plan, and I don't mean that negatively. I think that we have to start somewhere, and I think that where we've started is saying that the HCC could be this arts campus. And I appreciate everybody that came and gave their input because, and I could be naive for saying this, but my interpretation is, is that this is saying, we want this campus to be an arts campus. We don't know all of the nuts and bolts about what our arts community do, but we are committed to hearing you and understanding you. And I don't, I don't think that it was an intentional slight not to reach out to them. I think we need to, I think we need to be bold in saying, this is going to be an arts community. How can we make this best work with our partners? As an example, little kids bringing up expensive string instruments, banging them on every step on the way up, probably is a very good thing that our staff doesn't really know until we ask. And so I think that this is going to be, you know, a collaborative effort once the city park is opened up and some of the programming that's at HCC moves to City Park and it opens up spaces. I think that it will, it will definitely give us opportunities for a lot of different things. And to be very clear, I think that my direction would be, this is a bold plan, and now we need to start getting into the fine details before this is a bold plan, and now we need to start getting into the fine details before before this is completely down the road too far. And I think that that's probably the best, in my opinion, that's the best path forward is to say, hey, we're all in agreeance. Our community has spoken that we want an arts community here, and we want to grow our arts community. We've dedicated this space to it. Now, how do we make it work for everybody? And candidly, I will say that during construction, people's current classes will be disrupted some. It it's gonna happen. Our current programming is gonna is is gonna be disrupted. Our goal as a city is to minimize that as much as we possibly can with your input, but it's construction. Anybody that's ever lived through a bathroom remodel or something along those lines knows that everything gets disrupted. And you have our pledge that we want to work with you to minimize that disruption. So my clear direction, Mr. Ellis, is that this is a great start. We've we've said that this is going to be a an art center. Now, we need to work with our partners and figure out how to accommodate everything that we have moving forward and how we can help them continue to provide for the city their valuable contributions and make it a great place in the next five to seven years. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I agree that a project of this magnitude, we need to continue talking about it, and we need to continue to flush it out. So with that, Mr. Ellis, do you have the direction?
I think so, Mayor. So it sounds like we're quite clear on the repairs. No, no concerns about wanting to move forward with maintenance and repairs to the building and to keep working with all of our partners to start getting into details about how this might work. And I think once we have those things flushed out, we would love to come back and talk to the council again with more details about exactly what we think can and can't work in the building. So thank you.
Great, thank you. And thank you to all the speakers who came tonight. All right, moving on to the next one, Corona Public Library W D Addison Heritage Room Policy. Danielle Whittingham, the library manager, will present this item. What? Hi, Danielle.
Hi, Mayor. Hi, Council. How are you? So since the, sorry, I went the wrong way. Since the council has had an interest in the Heritage Room, I wanted to bring the Heritage Room policy to you to review and to approve. The Heritage Room has had its reopening in October 2020.
Danielle, could we get you to pull the mic a little closer and point it up? We want to make sure we hear everything you have to say.
There you go.
Is that better?
Yep.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, so the Heritage Room reopened in October 2024, and over the last several months, we've had about 15 or excuse me, 1,400 people come into the room. They were just moseying on, but then we also had another 150 that stayed and started to use the collections. And because of the increased use of the room and the collections, we wanted to create a policy that ensures longevity of those items. So the Heritage Room policy is a comprehensive document that discusses collection management, how to use the room, and volunteering and internships. The guidelines of the composition of the document, I based it on best practices and guidelines from local other local history rooms. I then sent the document to be reviewed by archivists and librarians at Cal State Fullerton, the Nixon Library Museum, and the Ontario City Library. After I received their suggestions, I put it into the final document and then presented it at the Library Board of Trustees, which was then approved and recommended to council in at that meeting. So there are five main sections of the policy I would like you to be aware of. The first is the collections development and management of the of our items. So the Heritage Room is only going to accept items that relate to the history of Corona and the surrounding areas. So we're looking for items that deal with the history, cultural life, local American indigenous groups, so on and so forth, also citrus industry. We are operating within the limits of our current storage space, processing times, and conservation of items. We don't want to acquire a lot of items at one time because then that creates another backlog, which we're trying to work through right now. And also, we don't want to accept an item that we can't continue to conserve. And then lastly, whenever we de-accession an item, or rather weed an item out of our collection, we're going to follow archival guidelines. But then we're also going to reach out to the donor and their families to see whether or not they want the item back. And if they don't, then we would find a repository that would want the item for their collections. Using the the collections in the room, there is an overview of how to use the items. We're asking patrons that they use the items at the tables or at the scanners. One item, excuse me, one folder or one box at a time. We're asking that all bags remain underneath the table while they're inside the Heritage Room. Food and water also needs to be underneath the table, no gum at all, sorry. It also goes into the different items that we have in our in our memory lab, which is currently in the Heritage Room and available to our patrons. The section also goes over fragile items. We've have a list of fragile items that we are concerned with them breaking because or tearing or ripping because they are old and they are fragile. And so we wanted to not only list what they are, but also let patrons know in advance. They still have access to these items, but we're asking that they are used in conjunction with a staff member. And also, you have to wear gloves. And then lastly, copyright law and code of conduct. The library code of conduct is still in effect while in the Heritage Room. And also, it's on the user to determine copyright. It's not on the library. The next section goes over the fragile collections, which are the glass negatives, newspaper microfilm, the film collection artifacts, oversized and panoramic photos, and maps. Again, these are still available to the public to use. We just ask that you use that with the help of a staff member. And the next section goes over, there's a detailed list of all the materials that we're currently accepting. And then lastly, for volunteering and internships, we're always looking for people to come and help in the Heritage Room. So for internships, if you are a student that is interested in interning with the Heritage Room, we ask that you reach out to your faculty member that's in charge of that. And then they will get in contact with the library manager, and then we can start seeing what your goals are and help you get to those goals. And then also, if you're interested in volunteering with the Heritage Room, first, you're going to go to a volunteer orientation session and fill out the necessary paperwork. After you get the A O K from our wonderful volunteer coordinator, they will send you over to the Heritage Room for training. And we currently have a couple of tasks, or some tasks may include being a docent or a guide while in the Heritage Room, preparing items for digitization, digitizing items, creating metadata or searchable tags, and filing. So that's the end of the policy. And I, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Whittington. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards for the public?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this item.
Not much of questions from my colleagues.
I think that
You don't have to talk. It's okay.
I think that any objects that are going out of circulation should go to Tom's house.
No.
And he's got a basement that we could put them all in, and it will be Heritage Room South. Fantastic idea.
Because wife might might have a second thought, second comment on that. Can we go back to the the next the previous slide? Thank you for this. This is really, I mean, this is great because we we're evolving as we we go here. And I'm excited to see kind of the next the next version and getting things, you know, back to where they should be. One of the things that I had I had brought up, and by the way, I hopefully at some point when when our media folks get some time to go up there and really highlight the the memory lab, which is really cool. Tom's been teasing me with pictures, and he always waits until I'm as far away from Corona as possible before he sends me some really cool thing that he's doing. And I said it'll take me an hour and a half to get there. And he it's like he knows. I think he's tracking me on my phone. But I I'm excited to see that, you know, we're kind of putting these these things into into practice or updating this policy to make sure that this thing, everything stays here for for the and stays in great shape. And I know that this this will keep evolving as as things happen. And I appreciate everything that you've done and and the staff has done to make it not only a welcoming place, but a place I think that that people are going to really enjoy when they get up there. And when they do, they I frequently hear from people that go, oh, I just went to the Heritage Room for the first time. It's really cool and amazing. I wanted to ask about like the the repository, if we find, you know, stuff. I know that we have a collection from Norco. We have, you know, some stuff for Tamsical Valley and some other things. I think some of that has some relation to Corona, and I know that we'll probably keep some and have otherwise. But I know that we get a lot of donations of the same thing. I think that there are pieces that that have some value to them, that if folks don't want them, there may be an opportunity for the the city to find a new home with somebody that may want to pay for them. And I'm not going to mention any specific items. I think you and I have talked about them. There's probably things that that people would, you know, would would love to have in their own personal collections and, you know, that be curated over time. But I know that, you know, like I have several pieces of Corona history that I I've paid a pretty good penny for, and I know other folks have because I bid against them and I lose frequently. But there will be, you know, things that we have multiple, multiple copies of that either we tell people, hey, yeah, if you want to give them to us, that's great. But, you know, we're not going to be able to put them in the collection. We'll probably find a way to, you know, sell them or whatever. But anyway, I think this is, I'm really excited. And thank you for for putting all these suggestions down and and to preserve this this room for for a long time. So thank you.
Tom?
Danielle, as always, you are awesome. I'll privately and publicly always say that, unless you're mad at me, then I won't say that. Yeah, she does get mad at me. Yeah, it's usually my fault. Number two, copyright law and code of conduct. I know that both copyright law has been used in the past as an act of discouragement, and I would like to see that removed completely. So what what do you there? There's nothing in there that's copyrighted. Like, people aren't donating anything that's copyrighted. And then they just say, hey, you can't take a picture of that. You can't use that. And it's just, it's been, it's triggering, to say the least. So what is copyright law?
So there are items in our Heritage Room, like books. There's some photos. Some of the the citrus labels are still under copyright by the people that created them. So it's under their direction to be able to use them in a to replicate them.
But no one's, okay, but if someone just wanted to take a picture of it?
No, if somebody wanted to just take a picture of it for their own personal, yes, that's fine. But if you wanted to reuse a citrus label for a sticker or for a poster, then you're going to need to contact or find the copyright holder for that.
For commercial use, right? That's where you're going with it? Okay, we're good now. And code of conduct, I see it, and I'm going to vote on it, and then it's going to bite me later. So what does what does code of conduct mean? I got to know these things, Ellis, or I always end up in Ellis's office, and then he says, promise me you'll never do that again. So I'm trying to avoid a promised conversation, so.
So the library of code of conduct is a document that essentially is just how to use the library. So obviously, there's no weapons, no firearms, no disruptive conduct, listening to staff, making sure that you are using the library in a respectful manner.
Okay, I'm with you. All right. I am. Glass negatives, the public can handle the glass negatives as long as they're careful, right?
Yes, because once they crack, they're damaged forever.
With you. And then I just want to say something right here. When the Heritage Room went through the remodel, I don't think really anyone never knew how much stuff was in the Heritage Room. And it's amazing how much stuff came out of that basement and into the Heritage Room. And it's all shown up, and it's all in boxes and organized, and and it's the room is just beautiful. But as we're starting to go through boxes, there's some high-value items that appear here and there, right? And so what are your plans to to deal with the high-value items? Like, how do we protect those?
Honestly, that would be, we would follow what local history rooms and archives would do. We would probably put those a little bit closer to the staff, making sure that we have eyes on them at all times. But I don't think we would restrict access to those.
Okay. And then Jacob, if I could make a recommendation that somewhere along the line, we get glass cabinets to put high-valued stuff in so people can see it, but not take it, if you're cool with that. You're the operations guy around here.
Yeah, that's a useful suggestion. We we're always looking for ways to to get the displays out, but also protecting the collection so we can see where that's feasible in the future.
Cool. Are you cool with that, Danielle? All right. Okay. I do. I really love this room, and it's I could go there every day if my wife would let me. But I do try to go once or twice a week. And the two, the two employees that are there, their names are Aaron and Juan. And these two, I want to call them kids, and it just makes me old, but these two guys are getting it. Like, they are, they have put their hearts into it. They they worked the room. It was, at first, it was very new to them. But now that they've been up there for a few months, they know where things are. People come in and they ask questions. They give the right answers. They're really learning it. As every day goes by, they become more familiar with that collection. And I've also learned that they're up there scanning stuff. Juan scanned a whole book, and it was the history of the street names in Riverside County. And now we have that book preserved, or digitally preserved, right? And then I was finagling around, and I I said, what are those dudes working on now? And they showed me. So they they reproduced the 1913 road tickets, and there's a show coming up or something like that where they're going to hand these out to the public. So I got one for each of you. There you go. I did remove it from the Heritage Room. And so these are make, these aren't the real things. These are replicas. And then here's the 1914 tickets. And so what I don't know, they told me what event they're going to, but at a future event, they're going to, in the near future, they're going to show up, and they reproduce the 1914 road tickets. And then they put pictures of the old Carnegie Library on the back. So not only is the Heritage Room being, taking care of our history and preserving our history, but they're actually starting to be proactive now. And they're coming out to the public, and they're educating the public. And I'm guessing that's your idea, and I'm so happy that you had that idea. And I'm really pleased to hear that 1,400 people have been in the Heritage Room since it opened. I truly believe in two to three years is when it'll hit its stride. And I know I'm long-winded. I know you want to go home.
Mr. Richardson, were you 1,350 of that 1,400 people?
I might have been. But to the credit of the old historian that was there, it is amazing to sit and go through what's in that room. There's there are artifacts that are donated from 1887 when the city first began. And you go through photos that say 1913 and 1923 and 1937. And all of these photos and items and artifacts have been lovingly been preserved. Like, I I go through folders one at a time. And great lengths have been taken to make sure these have stayed in good condition, and it just makes me happy. I hope you agree with me, Danielle, that there's just since the room that's opened, there's just some fine tuning that needs to go on. And that's what we're talking about tonight. And I 100% 100% support all of this until I don't. So that's all my comments, Mayor.
Thank you, Tom. Jacquet, anything?
Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. We do need a motion on whether to approve this new policy.
I'll make the motion.
Tom and Wes? Let's move back to the agenda. All right, that passes 5:00. Moving on to 10.3 Athletic Field Rates Ad-Hoc Committee Recommendation for Moving on to 10.3 Athletic Field Rates, Ad-Hoc Committee Recommendation for Everyone Plays Youth Sports Groups. Ms. Finch, Community Service Director, this one's on you, too.
Yes, thank you again, Mayor. Hello. So I'm here to give an update tonight on the athletic field rates and the discussions that we've been having with the ad hoc committee over the last several months. And our ask tonight is that the City Council receive an update on the committee's recommendation for Everyone Plays Youth Sports Group and approve the proposed cost recovery target and field rates for fiscal year '26 and '27. So I just want to start with a brief overview of the background. I know you're familiar with everything leading up to this issue, but I just want to kind of retouch on it and refresh everyone's memories. So as you know, the rates have not been studied for six years on what we are currently charging for athletic field rates. And in early 2024, the city conducted a fee study for all citywide fees and charges. During that time, staff evaluated the rates and recommended fee adjustments to help move towards cost recovery goals that we identified in our Park and Recreation Master Plan. The most significant adjustment that was recommended as part of this was adjusting the hourly field rate reservation fee for the priority two groups up to $20 per hour. After these adjustments were approved, we found that several leagues were paying an outdated group two Y rate of $4 and $5 an hour that was previously offered to leagues that were part of the Youth Sports Advisory Council, known as Y-SAC. Y-SAC, however, had been eliminated in 2019 to provide more equitable allocation model for how we allocate fields, and a reassignment of the new categories to the master fee study did not occur. This compounded the rate increase in the leagues paying the Y-SAC rate, making it much larger than they originally anticipated. So just a quick update on the Park and Rec Master Plan and some refresh of the background on that. That was adopted on February 7, 2024, and the purpose of the plan is to create a unified vision and framework on how to maintain and enhance our park and recreation system and make it sustainable for the long term. This includes multiple initiatives and actions to upgrade our parks, improve our recreation programs, maintain and manage our assets, and sustain our recreation system for the long term. A key component of the Park and Recreation Master Plan was the Financial Sustainability Strategy, and this was to ensure the long-term sustainability of the park system. The strategy was developed first by identifying a baseline measurement to determine the full cost to provide a service, which includes the material, maintenance, staff costs, utilities, everything that goes into actually operating that programmer service. Then it was looked at to determine the appropriate balance between subsidizing services or implementing fees and charges to help fund those services. And then following that, they developed a philosophy for funding strategies to help offset costs. Three workshops were held with the Parks and Recreation Committee to help develop this strategy. Those occurred on the dates listed below, between May and October of 2022. So during the development of the Financial Sustainability Strategy, the first step was to group programs that had similar purposes into like service categories. There were eight different service categories that were identified through this process that ranged from open access services, which is services that anyone could use at any time for self-directed activities, such as our splash pads, our parks and trails, our basketball courts, those type of drop-in amenities where you didn't require a reservation, you can just go and use it. Other ones that are a part of this include reservations. Those are spaces and facilities that are reserved for more exclusive use by individuals or groups, and that would include reserving a banquet room or a sports field for a private corporate event. The second step is to then determine who benefits from this service, which is called the beneficiary of service model. So by working through the beneficiary of service model, it was determined that services that provide a more common good and are accessible to all would require a higher subsidy, and then services that provide more of an individualized benefit, which is an exclusive specialized benefit to individuals and constraints and barriers, would be offset more with costs and fees for the program. So as you can see here, the categories for all of the eight service categories that were identified were ranked based on the level of common good and benefit that they provide versus the individualized benefit. Again, higher subsidies were recommended and with lower cost recovery for common good services and programs, such as open access, community health and wellbeing, and signature events. And then lower subsidies and higher cost recovery were recommended for more individualized services, including education and enrichment and reservations. Youth sports fell into the skill-based activity category, which was on the higher end of this scale with a recommended cost recovery rate of 70 to 90%. So in looking at skill-based activities as a category, this, again, was a combined group that included all types of skill-based activities, not just youth sports. So we have a lot of our classes, contract classes in there, music classes, STEM classes, anything where a individual is able to develop a skill through their participation in that program. As an entire group, that skill-based activity cohort recovered costs at about, almost 49% at 48.56%. However, the range of cost recovery varied widely within this group, and the youth sports camps and certain contract classes were recovering costs at over 100%. But when you pull out just the athletic field reservations, we saw cost recovery rates at much lower, and those were about 12.6% based off of our fiscal year '24 expenditures and revenues. So as the recommended rate increases were implemented for the youth sports groups, we received quite a bit of feedback from the community regarding the impact of this increase. The feedback included that the proposed rates were unrealistic, that it was too much of an increase too soon, that it could negatively impact families, and that the cost recovery goal of 70 to 90% needs to be considerably lower, and the implementation of any rate increases should be phased in to help mitigate impacts. Based off this feedback, we received a recommendation from the City Council on October 16 of 2024 to pause the rate increase for athletic field reservations, separate out cost recovery policy from field allocation policy, create a new service category for Everyone Plays Leagues, and set the cost recovery goal at less than 50% for this new service category. Then it was recommended that if a rate increase was needed to achieve these goals, to start all leagues at the rate that they were currently paying, and then phase in any rate increases over multiple years. And then the last piece of that was to create an ad hoc committee with community stakeholders to help develop a joint solution. So the ad hoc committee was formed in January of this year, and it included representatives from the City Council. We had Councilmember Dario on the committee, as well as Commissioner Tom Munoz from the Park and Rec Commission, as well as staff, and then representatives from the Everyone Plays Youth Sports Groups that are listed on this slide. We held biweekly meetings with the committee from January 3 through March 24 with six meetings total. And in addition to discussing field rates, we also discussed field maintenance responsibilities and standards. During the meetings, the city provided a detailed breakdown of our rising expenditures for field maintenance and operations and the need for increase in cost recovery. The leagues also shared how they did not identify as an individualized service category, and they believed they aligned more closely with the common good service categories. And in order to help kind of work through this discussion, we did an exercise to identify the benefits that youth sports provide. The common good benefits that were identified during that exercise include building a strong community, bringing families together, including kids, parents, and grandparents, improving physical and mental health, helping serve underserved youth, and then building volunteerism. And then the individualized benefits included building skills, and then, of course, using the fields for reservations, which is very much an individualized service. So the common good benefits through this exercise were determined to outweigh the individualized benefits greatly, and it was decided based off of the balance of common good versus individualized to take a look at what rates would be in that 20 to 30% cost recovery mark. As we were starting to evaluate the rates, we did remind the leagues that the costs will continue to rise, and ongoing rate increases would be needed in order to stay within this cost recovery range, even moving forward after recommendations were to come up for the next year or two. Sorry, let me go back. Okay. To determine what rates could look like for just the Everyone Plays group as a separate category, we broke out this group from the other youth sports groups. And we did this by looking at the percentage of the total field reservation hours that they use. So it was really looking at the Everyone Plays groups versus the surplus groups, which are the travel balls and the club teams. So Everyone Plays was determined to be the vast majority of our users. They used the fields approximately 90% of the time, and the portion of this use was determined, used to determine what their expenditures would be, and then to create the cost recovery scenarios and rate development for that. So this chart shows what the percentage of cost recovery with rate scenarios ranging from $7 an hour to $11 an hour could look like. Based on this model and the cost recovery target of 20 to 30%, staff recommended a phased rate increase of $7 an hour effective July 1, 2025, which is a 75% increase over what they're currently paying, and then $10 an hour effective July 1, 2026, which is 150% increase over what they're currently paying. We then asked the leagues to identify what their registration costs would be at the end, using each of these scenarios. The registration cost scenarios for the leagues at $10 an hour, which was the max that was recommended, ranged from an $18 increase for the Corona Chargers to a $107 increase for the Corona Girls Softball Association per season. And it was determined that the leagues that were estimating lower increases have historically been able to fit more players on the fields at one time, so they were more efficient in using the fields, and were therefore able to spread those costs widely against their players, as opposed to the leagues that had a higher cost increase. They were reserving fields with lower amount of players, which then provided a greater impact on the registration fees. So after reviewing the scenarios, the leagues agreed to the city's recommendation for the rate adjustments, and we also agreed to set maintenance standards and working with the leagues throughout the year to identify any necessary and ongoing improvements. And the final recommendation that came out of the ad hoc committee is listed here on this slide, and that includes conducting pre- and postseason walkthroughs with the city and the leagues to identify field maintenance needs, implementing a field maintenance checklist, which was developed during this committee process, to distinguish city and league maintenance responsibilities, setting cost recovery targets at 20 to 30% for Everyone Plays Youth Sports Leagues, and then phasing in the rate, the first initial rate increase over a two-year period, which includes adjusting fees to $7 an hour beginning July 1, 2025, and then adjusting fees to $10 an hour beginning July 1, 2026. The next step in this process, following a direction from City Council tonight, if you were to approve it, would be to amend the master fee recovery schedule to reflect new field reservation rates for fiscal year '26 and '27. And then we would also amend the Park and Recreation Master Plan to create that new service category for the Everyone Plays Leagues at the 20 to 30% cost recovery range. And then moving forward, in order to keep ongoing communication open with the leagues, we are proposing to hold biannual meetings with the Everyone Plays Youth Sports Groups. So our ask again is on the slide, and that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Finch. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public?
Mayor, yes, we have two speaker cards for this item.
All right. Come on down. Welcome. Thank you for sticking it out.
No worries. I've sat through a lot of City Council meetings, so I get it. Good evening, everybody. My name is James Rush with AYSO Region 37. I know you probably don't hear that too often in these chambers, but I just wanted to come down and thank you guys for hearing us, hearing the leagues, hearing the community back in October about the proposed rate increases you had back then, and taking the suggestion of putting together ad hoc committee. I was part of that ad hoc committee. I want to thank you, Tony, for being a part of that, also Donna. I see Moses sitting back there. It was a good collective effort. You know, we had candid discussion. It allowed the leagues to understand some of the fiscal challenges that the city faces. Fact of the matter is, cost of business is going up, whether it's your household or running a city, and we recognize that, and we support these proposals moving forward. It allows you to meet your threshold of meeting the cost recovery, that 20 to 30%, but also affords us the opportunity to keep the rates as low as possible, so that way, as many Corona residents as possible can participate in the program. So just wanted to come down, say thank you, and I approve these rates as recommended.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Good evening. So this is an example of what happens when you actually engage the stakeholders. So, and also, this seems a lot more reasonable than the original proposal, but I also want to make sure that Jason Lass is mentioned in all this, because he was part of the entire structure of establishing the fees, and I know he was part of this deal. He's been a part of everything in this department, and I, and he's taken on the, he's participating in a long-held tradition of leaving the city for other opportunities. So he's going to be running the Parks Department in Ontario, which it's a pretty big job. He's a very capable guy, and it's too bad he had to leave. So anyway, I just want to thank him for all his hard work in this. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Ms. Edwards. No other speakers, right?
Mayor, we do not have any more speaker cards.
Any questions or comments from my colleagues? First of all, Tony, thank you so much for representing the council on this ad hoc. I really appreciate the leagues and everybody being involved with staff as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. It was a, it was a real great experience, and I appreciate the leagues coming out and coming together. I also wanted to thank Tom Munoz, who sat through all these meetings with myself, Donna Fitch, Moses Cortez, Karen, some guy named Jason Lass. He was kind of a big deal on this, too, and we wish him well in Ontario. But this was, this was a great effort. I mean, first of all, no tables were flipped by myself or any of the, any of the leagues, so that's good. But it was, it really was a lot of good, open discussion, and not just centered on the actual rates, but there was a lot of good stuff that came out of it. Some of the plans for the preseason and postseason walks, a couple other things. Ms. Finch, I didn't, I know that we had talked about it, but we had talked about a maintenance fee for some of the surplus teams that if they're going to practice on the fields and there's any damage, that it wouldn't negatively impact some of the teams that are coming behind them. Did we ever settle that or come to an agreement on something with that? I thought we did, but...
It was discussed. It wasn't part of the final recommendation, but if that's something the council wants us to explore, we can continue to look at that.
Yeah, we had talked about, you know, some, one of the, some of the feedback from the leagues were, just in baseball, for example, if a surplus team or a travel ball team or something utilizes a field in, in the open times that there is, and, you know, some of the leagues were saying, you know, they just, they damaged something, or batters' boxes or something like that. And there was a suggestion to charge them a, basically a fee, like a reservation fee that would cover some of the maintenance. And I think that that was, it was a great idea, and I think that we should kind of take that up and look at that as well. But, you know, the meetings were great. It was very well attended. I think, for the most part, all of the leagues were represented, but one or two meetings just because, you know, work and life and so on and so forth. But they were all there, they were all engaged. Special shout out to Moses, who apparently every single one of these leagues has on speed dial and know him very well. And there was a lot of, well, Moses on Tuesday, when you walked and this, that, and, you know, I shudder to think of how many hours Mr. Cortez actually works for the city. But obviously, he is well-known and well-appreciated, and just, just because he is doing a lot of work, and he knew, he knew everything. Well, we're getting ready to cut the arch on this, and, you know, yeah, I know about those soccer goalposts, and we're going to get them out, and like, he knew everything. There wasn't anything that he wasn't aware on any of their fields, which is extremely impressive. You know, the league's committed to doing things on their end to, you know, have some efficiency gains. If they don't need a field, they'll give it back so that somebody else can rent it out. And when they're giving a field back, it's going to give the city an opportunity to charge some of these club teams a higher rate to utilize our fields. And there's, there's certainly needs, and if these fields are open and we have an opportunity to charge these club teams a whole lot of money for them to use it, that goes to help mitigate these costs. Special shout out and thank you to Ms. Sitten's team for providing a lot of financial data that really was needed so that they could understand, so the leagues could understand the city's position and where we are. We talked a lot about water and the cost of water going up in fiscal year '27 and ' '28 and '29, and us not knowing what that's going to be simply because we can't control something like that. So I was very proud of the work that came out of this. I'm appreciative that you came out tonight and weren't throwing pitchforks at us and, you know, understand that, that this is a great, this is a great thing for our community, but it's, it should serve as a great example of the community coming out, making their grievances known, and the city pausing and saying, "Hey, we didn't, maybe we didn't get this right. Let's, let's form a committee, and let's figure this out." And that's exactly what we did. And I think this is something that everybody can live with, and setting that, that target, that cost recovery target rate between 20 and 30%. They know that as a percentage, the dollar amount is going to change, but we're trying to stay within that percentage so that... amount is going to change, but we're trying to stay within that percentage so that they're not overburdened, the city's not, you know, getting a 90% recovery, but we're trying to stay within a percentage rate. So I was very proud of all of the work that did. Thank you, Ms. Finch. If Jason is watching, thank you, Jason, for his moderating these meetings and helping keep keeping things moving along. And I want to say a special thank you to all of the teams that showed up to talk about, you know, the challenges that they have, and I really appreciate the work that they're doing for the city by providing these opportunities for young athletes in our community. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Can we go back to Slide 16 really quick? So the new proposed weight, it's at $7 an hour. Is this number that's going to be their registration fees, is that based on their current usage? So I know like that Corona National, and it sounds like they're going to be giving some fields back, or Corona Americans are going to be giving some fields back. So will that actually lower their rate even further, or is this the number that they think they're going to be able to charge?
These are the numbers they provided us, and I believe they use their current usage. So if they start allocating less fields, it will likely go down.
I mean, that's one of the purposes of this is to them to give up, to give up fields that they're not using, which I think is frankly, you know, as you pointed out, they're not using them efficiently. So I think that was one of the reasons for this. If you don't charge anything, then people don't, you know, don't have any care on how they use. So I appreciate that. I'm a little bit worried that these folks are going to come back to us in 2027 and say, you know, this 150% increase, but if they agree to it, I'm happy that you're here and to vouch for it. So I'll leave it at that. Can I go to the next slide? The, I was really, really happy to see number two, that field maintenance checklist to distinguish between what the city and the maintenance of the league's responsibilities. I think one of the reasons why you pointed out earlier that there are leagues that have more efficient use of the fields, like I think you pointed out in the staff report, like Corona Chargers was one of them, the fact that I think, I think there's a fine line between being efficient and beating the hell out of the fields. I think if you look at Corona Chargers when they start, it's pretty green, looks great. I drive by there, used to live right around the corner, and at the end, they turn us back in a dirt field. And I'm curious about whether or not that field walkthrough at the end, if they turn something in that's dirt, is, do their fees cover it to, not only to come back, but the downtime for it to come back? Because maybe they should be using a little bit more room. Maybe they should be not all concentrated on, at one park and in the end, come back with a dirt field. How are we, how are we doing that? What's the, I mean, is that their responsibility to bring it back to what it was when we gave it to them, or is that what the fee is for?
The fees help offset the costs of all of the work that we do. So just the general maintenance day-to-day as well as the rehabilitation costs for, at the end of season, those fees help offset that. Right now, there's no additional responsibility that are put on the leagues that they need to turn the fields over in the condition that it was when they got them. That wasn't part of the discussion. It's the fees that help to help.
Okay. That's one of the things I'm concerned of, because I think that, I mean, I, you can't play too many baseball games because you just run out of time. And I think soccer, I think the same thing. You guys can only use so many fields. You know, you can double up or whatever, but I think practices and some of the other things that happen, they're not playing, you know, the Corona Chargers, and nothing against the Corona Chargers, they're not playing games there. They're practicing, and they have a very, you know, they have a lot of kids. And so I'm just worried about that this may not be equitable or maybe actually squeezed down even further and turned totally in the dirt. So maybe this is some point we can, I don't know, it was one of my concerns before that they, you know, teams that, if they're getting squeezed too much on costs and trying to keep their costs down to shrink down even more, that they're really going to beat up the fields, and then we're going to be left with even more costs to rehabilitate?
You know, do you mind, Ms. Finch? Corona Chargers was actually very forthcoming about saying, we beat the hell out of our fields. And for, you know, four or five months, they've got, how many teams?
Thousands of kids.
Yeah, they got plenty of kids out there, and the Chargers and Mr. Cortez really have a really good understanding of what it is that they're doing. In fact, the league president of the Chargers says, you know, when you guys put your gates up, I'm, I can't tell you how many times he would call Moses and say, there's some people playing on the fields and the gates are up, and, you know, because he's trying to let the fields do, come back naturally, right? We have a seeding program and all kinds of, you know, fertilizing programs and all kinds of things that Mr. Cortez is managing. The problem that everybody has is when those gates go up, because we're trying to let a field recover, people are going around the gates, right? So...
No, I lived, I lived 21 years where I could throw my rock from my backyard and hit Santana Park. No one pays attention to those gates. I mean, granted now that we have Rangers, so hopefully, you know, that's going to increase. But, I mean, you go by, when those gates are up on a Saturday or a Sunday, the first thing that they come down, people take them apart, and they're down there, you know, playing.
I don't disagree, and, you know, as their program expands, maybe we need to look at additional fields or something along those lines. But the reality is, is I think that, that, you know, Mr. Cortez knows the fields really well, they know the fields really well, and all of the teams spend umptium hours of their own time, their own volunteer time, trying to maintain a lot of their fields and doing what they can to fix them. You know, they're doing their own seeding, they're doing all kinds of different things, they're rebuilding batters boxes, they're doing a lot of different things. So I think it's a collaborative effort.
I don't have any doubt that the baseball teams and AYSO, they, I see those folks out there in the preseason, I have for years. I don't know if that's what the Chargers do, because I haven't seen them. Like I said, they use it for practice. They're not using it for games, so it's getting a ton of use. And at some point, would there be a situation where we would go back to them and say, hey, maybe there's too many kids here?
So we recently, I think it was last fall, adopted the field allocation policy, and part of the policy includes the leagues submitting their rosters to help us determine what their field needs are. The main driver is to make sure that teams aren't overbooking fields, but it also can be used the other way. If we see a league submitting, you know, 500 rosters and they're only asking for two fields, then that's going to raise questions. So we have that mechanism in place with the policy now that really allows us to take a closer look at what they're asking for matches what their needs are.
Perfect. That's all I wanted to hear, because I do think that there needs to be a conversation with them about spreading out a little bit, because in that way, because frankly, after they finish, those fields are toast. I mean, they are for AYSO in some respect. I mean, they're two different things, but that, it's just dirt. And so, yeah, I'm excited. Thank you for that, for sharing that piece. But yeah, I've got nothing else. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just want to quickly say thank you to Tony for doing this. Thank you for the leagues and coming and speaking. It's been impressive, impressive to watch, and I'm very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony, and thank you very much. I know this one wasn't, and you volunteered pretty quick for this one, so thank you to you and Tom, and I have words for Mr. Lass I'm going to share at the end, you know, where I shun him and then unshun him, but...
I just want to say thank you. I want to thank you, thank the coaches, the folks with leagues, our team, my colleague, for participating in this process and putting in the work and really coming together with the shared goal of finding solutions, which is really important. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Tony, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah. I would give the option anyway.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a motion that we approve this as presented.
I second.
All right. Tony and Jackie, please vote. I know you do. All right. That passes 5-0. Moving on to 10.4 fiscal year 2026, Community Events Co-sponsorship Program Request. Mrs. Finch is getting a lot of work in tonight.
Last one from me, I promise.
All right, good.
Okay, so I'm here tonight to present the co-sponsorship program request for fiscal year '26, and our "Ask" of the council is to review and approve the Phase 1 of the co-sponsorship program requests. So just quick overview of Community Events Co-sponsorship Program. It's been a very popular program over the years for Corona, and it's intended as a way for the city to help support and facilitate nonprofit events and programs that are open to the public. It provides awards for singular events in the form of a fee waiver or in-kind assistance from the city. Last year, we divided the program into two phases to give nonprofits an opportunity to apply for program and sponsorships two different times per year. Previously, it was only offered once a year for the entire year, but if events came up in the middle of the year, then they had to wait until the next year in order to be able to request that. So by dividing it into the phases, for Phase 1, we are looking at events for July through December of each year. We accept applications in February and March, and we bring those to council in April for consideration, which is what we're doing today. And then Phase 2 is for January through June events. Applications are accepted in July and August, and those are brought to council in October. So quick recap of the co-sponsorship program criteria. The sponsorships are available to Corona-based 501(c)(3) nonprofits, and their events must be open to the public and promote the city of Corona as a safe, vibrant, family-friendly community, a desirable place to live, visit, or do business, a visitor destination, or bring tourists into the city, or the event can enhance the quality of life and well-being for Corona residents, advance the city's commitment and pride in being a multicultural community, and promote cultural and artistic awareness in the city. So this is a snapshot of the Phase 1 requests that we are recommending for council's approval for tonight. The value of these requests is at $9,123, and it includes eight events. Six of these are returning events that we've provided previously through our co-sponsorship program, and that includes the Circle City Coral Broadway Show, the Chamber Patriots Day Event, the Trades Day Event, Lions Club Pancake Breakfast, Light the Night by Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, and Amber Waves of Grain. And then this year, we do have two new events. They're new to the co-sponsorship program but not new to Corona. This includes the Crystal Knot Holocaust Remembrance Event and the Remembrance Day Safe Streets for Everyone. For Phase 2, we haven't accepted these applications yet, but these are the ones that we are anticipating to return based off of previous activities, and that includes 10 events, which are listed right here. I won't go to any, into any of details on those because we will be bringing those back to council for consideration in October. So again, this is an overview of our "Ask" for this year. The Phase 1 "Ask" is for eight events at $9,123, and then for Phase 2, we are anticipating 10 events at $20,000, which has an estimated cost of $29,123 for fiscal year '26. This is a projected savings of just over $4,700 from the previous fiscal year, and that's due to some of the previous event requests that had come in last year that were not submitted this year. So this is our "Ask Again" of the council tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Finch. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public?
Mayor, yes, we have one speaker card for this item.
All right. That person, come on up. I see nobody coming up. I'm assuming they left. Do you remember, Ms. Edwards?
He decided not to speak.
Okay. All right, then let's bring it back to my colleagues. Any comments or questions from any of you guys? Ms. Jacque?
Yeah, I'll just say that I appreciate how we continue to make changes as we discover the, like, how to better formulate this program for our community. I think it was really smart to have two phases to break up the submission requests, and I'm happy to see the diversity of applicants in Phase 1 and in the projection of Phase 2. So, thank you.
All right. Can I get a motion?
Sure.
Second.
Tom and Jackie, please vote. That passes 5-0. We are getting closer, guys. All right. 11.1 is Legislative Matters Ordinance Adding Section 1.04-165 and Amending 1.04-170 of the Corona Municipal Code to Regulate the Use of the City Logo and Wordmark. Any council member want a staff report on this item? Okay. Then we would have Mr. Justin Tucker, our Assistant City Manager, will present this item.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. The item before you is a really simple addition to the Corona Municipal Code to add the logo and the wordmark next to the seal in our code to protect that as a part of our intellectual property. It's a pretty simple request to basically just encumber that intellectual property and codify that for those who would use it against our desires.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Ms. Edwards, any speaker cards on this?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this item.
Any questions or comments? Tony, did, answer your question.
Yeah, I really don't, I really don't want to talk about Tony's desires, but...
It's too late. Come on.
No, I'm good.
All right. Good? All right. Motion, please.
Motion.
Tom and Jackie?
Mayor, the motion needs to be read.
Introduced by Title Only and Way Full Reading of Ordinance Number 3415. First reading of an ordinance adding Section 1.04-165 and amending of the Corona Municipal Code to Regulate Use of the City Logo and Wordmark. All right. That passes 5-0. Moving on to reports from Boards and Commissions. Nothing from Library Board of Trustees, nothing from Planning and Housing, nothing from Parks and Rec. Got a regional meetings update from Vice Mayor Jackie Casillas on the Western Riverside Council of Governments, WRCOG, meeting of April 7, 2025.
Yes, thank you. The hot topic item on the agenda was leadership for the next year. Our previous chair only had the opportunity to serve a few months. Rita from Paris ended up not winning her reelection, and so then the first vice chair bumped up. And it was a hearty discussion, and ultimately, the resolution was that our current chair will serve essentially a year and a half in that position, and we moved on. So, that's it.
All right. And then, let's see, we're moving on to me. Update from me on the Riverside County Transportation Commission Board Meeting of April 9, 2025. This was only the second RCTC meeting that I've had to sit on as an alternate in the last six years, because Lass is always there. So thank you for not making me go to that very often. There was four discussion items. The only one I'm going to talk about was a discussion on whether to remove call boxes from the Riverside County highways. The call boxes were established in the 80s and paid for with a $1 increase on your vehicle registration. Later included was the creation of the Freeway Service Patrol, changeable messaging signs, support for traffic operations centers. In 2010, the 511 Traveler Information System was launched, and when call boxes were at their peak in the 1990s, they were used over 80,000 times per year. And now that everybody has cell phones, the call boxes were used, in the entire county were used only 311 times last year. So the existing maintenance contract was, or is getting ready to expire. So the question to the commissioners was whether it continues to be worth it to maintain and provide the technology and the upgrades for all these boxes if they are rarely used. So apparently, there's only one company in the entire state of California that performs the maintenance and upgrade on call boxes, and the sole provider has failed to live up to his contractual obligation. And because of their poor performance from the sole provider, the functioning of the call boxes just weren't reliable. So therefore, the commissioners voted 19 to 10 in favor of removing all call boxes. I voted to remove them. RCTC is going to quickly be conducting a motorized assistance study that will address improving things like cell services throughout the area, possibly providing additional cameras along the freeways, improving the visibility of mile markers and other things. And of the 311 calls last year, 37% were no help required, 36% requested a tow, 10% for a disabled motorist, 5% for actual emergencies, which is only like 16 calls in the entire county. And then the other 11% was categorized as other, so it'd be like a homeless person. And then the other 11% was categorized as other, so be like a homeless person on the freeway picking up the phone, calling for services, something like that. Anyways, that's my update.
Jim, let me guess, the, the 10 folks were from the, the eastern part of the county?
They were all from the desert, yeah.
Yeah, it's really, that was one of the, we had this conversation last year, and it was, or two years ago, and that was one of the, the things they were supposed to bring back was just because there are people, you know, not very many that don't have cell phones, but.
Somebody will drive by and see you and call it in.
And that was the, that was the discussion then, and they were going to bring it back, so.
Yeah. All right, moving on, city attorneys report, Ms. Raymond?
There was no reportable action in closed session tonight.
All right, thank you so much. Mr. Ellis, city manager, comments?
No comments, thank you, Mayor.
All right, city council members, reports and comments. Start with Tony, and I can kick it back to you for the end. Okay?
Just, just two things. One, wanted to, you know, Tom gave us our, the 1913, 1914 copies today, but I just wanted to say today is the 109th anniversary of our night, last race, 1916 race. It was April 16, 1916, and resulted in three deaths, which is one of the reasons why the, the race was canceled. It was won by Eddie O'Donnell. Eddie took home the Flagler Trophy, which currently sits in the Auburn Core Duesenberg Museum in, in Auburn, Indiana. So if you're ever in northern Indiana and you want to go see a little piece of Corona history, it's there. And newly opened, the Indy 500 Museum has, the second place car from the 1914 race is prominently displayed in their Duesenberg display. So if you're ever in those two places. And then lastly, anybody that, that leaves the city or leaves my employ personally, I shun them. So Jason, you are hereby shunned, I mean, unshunned. Thank you for your service, and, and I, I will miss you and your family and everything you've done for the city and reshun.
Oh, boy. Well, Tony says when people leave the city that they are dead to them. I, I'm happy for Jason, and I just hope he finds out that Ontario sucks and he's back in a few weeks, so. Still sucks. And we, the employees have gone to Ontario and come back, so I'll just see Jason in a few weeks. That's where it's at. Don't even try to hire someone to replace him, he'll be back in three weeks.
Anything else? All right, I'm going to kick it back to Councilmember Dodaria, who would like to close in memory of a resident tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. On April 3, 2025, the city of Corona lost a great man. We've all heard the phrase, they don't make them like they used to. That saying is appropriate for the life of Thomas Phillips. Tom was born in Columbia, South Carolina, and came west. After running a successful laundry business in Buena Park, he came to Corona in 1984. He started AAA awnings and gutters that he ran full-time with his wife of 40 years, Edith, until retirement in 2022. Tom's business thrived because he was fair, honest, and went out of his way to live his values. Many customers, myself included, were, were of repeat business. In fact, the patio Tom built for me was a replacement of two patios he had built that I wanted to make a change on. Tom was an avid outdoorsman. He was a championship-winning fisherman and dedicated hunter. Nothing stood in Tom's way of a hunt, including open-heart surgery at 81, telling the doctor to get it scheduled ASAP because he had already had an elk tag in three months' time, and he was not going to miss the season. Tom was, Tom also became a patent holder slash inventor. Having spent years in the cleaning industry and understanding how cleaning chemicals work, developed a spray-on cleaning solution for boats, cars, and other vehicles. And if you have a bottle of Phillips pink stuff, it's, it's worth its weight in gold. When I moved to my current house, I had the good fortune of becoming Tom's neighbor. I'd already known Tom for years and truly hit the neighbor lottery. If I already did not own the tool needed, Tom for sure had it, and I definitely had garage envy. Councilmember Richens, you would be happy to know that Tom Phillips had a DeWalt collection that you would also be jealous of. On occasion, when I would leave the house and get down the road several miles and try to remember if I closed the garage door, I would call Tom and ask him to check. And usually the answer was, you don't have to worry, bud, I'm home. When Tom's wife, Edith, got sick and was hospitalized for a length of time, time, Tom spent every day with her by driving to Loma Linda daily and being by her side. Her recovery, I'm certain, was aided by his presence. I never heard him complain, and he always said with a smile that he was happy to do it. Tom and Edith share four kids, eight grandchildren, and four great-grandchildren. Tom was a devout Christian, his faith on display always, and even in his final days, as I would visit, he would end our visit with, I'll pray for you. Tom will be missed by all that know him. I'd like to close this meeting in his honor.
All right, thank you very much. This next meeting of the city council will be May 7, 2025. This meeting is adjourned.